The time is now five oh one. Good evening and welcome to the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I am Dr. Felton Moss, Committee Chair and District Seven Board Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be assessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. This time we'll move to roll call. Ms. Adelaide, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Briggs.
Present.
Is with us, Shredder.
Present.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Judge Jackson. We have four members present.
There are four members present with a quorum present, the Policy and Governance Committee meeting will now come to order. At this time, we'll move to adoption of the agenda. The Chair would like to inform the public that the agenda for this evening will vary slightly to accommodate for our visiting speakers. After Agenda Item two point one, Public Comments, the Committee will consider Agenda Item four point four, Policy thirty-three twenty-three, Purchasing. If there are no objections, the Committee shall adopt the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda as amended. There are no objections, the June twenty, the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting agenda is adopted as amended. We also need to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes. If there are no corrections, the Committee shall approve the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes as distributed. Any corrections? There being no corrections, the minutes are approved. We'll move to Public Comments on the Agenda Item. It appears that we have no public comments tonight. There are no live speakers. Is that correct, Ms. Adelaide? Okay. Given that there are no public comments, we will now consider Agenda Items four point four, Policy thirty-three twenty-three, Purchasing. I do want to remind members that we'll have two rounds per item during the discussion. Each round will be about two and a half minutes. So Policy thirty-three twenty-three, the Chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to introduce her guest speakers and to provide an overview of Policy thirty-three twenty-three. Just to remind the Committee members, we've gone back and forth on this policy a good bit. But we should be here with the things that we need tonight. I know the administration has been working graciously. Oh, Ms. Howell is with us tonight, as well as Ms. Johnson. And they should be able to answer whatever questions we have about this item tonight. So Ms. Welsh, would you introduce your speakers and then provide an overview of thirty-three twenty-three? I don't think Ms. Welsh is here yet, so I'll just recognize the speakers from the administration. Okay, Ms. Howell, are you here to do thirty-three twenty-three or are Ms. Johnson's doing it? But I, Ms. Johnson is on your team, so I'll let you move how you need to.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come back and to be able to participate in this ongoing discussion about potential changes to the proposed Board Policy thirty-three twenty-three. Before we get started into the presentation, it will be a tag team between myself and Director Johnson. Just wanted to give a little bit of context and background for the Board member, the Board Committee members, as well as for the community at large. The purchasing function is a relatively new function underneath our division. It's been historically, well, it most recently it was under the Division of Operations and around last seven or eight months transitioned to Business Management Services Division. This is an area that has ping pong back and forth between the two divisions quite frequently, depending on who was in leadership and where they felt the function was aligned. But within the last four and a half years that I've been here with the district, it's been under three different Division Chiefs, two different Associate Superintendents, two different Directors, and out of our three Supervisors, two thirds of them are new. One person has been here throughout, and a lot of the staff are new as well. So there have been a lot of changes, and when you have that kind of changes at the leadership level, it will impact the consistency in which your policies and procedures are being implemented. It's important and part of the work that Director Johnson and myself have begun is to create structure, processes and procedures that stand the test of time regardless of who is sitting in what seat. But we are trying to create some structure and consistency in how the work is being done. So we come back before you today, sharing information that was pulled together relating to procurements for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, and to use it as a basis to help facilitate if we were to look at our current policy as it stands now and lay over the proposed changes, what would that do in terms of the procurements that we would be required to go through a formal bid and approval process? So with that being said, I will kick it over to Director Johnson, who will get us started, and then we will go from there.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Are we going to show the presentation or do you, or do you just want me to speak in to the presentation? Or will it be up on the screen?
Did you submit, Ms. Howell, do you have, Ms. Howell, do you have the slides or Ms. Adelaide, do you have them?
Both.
I have them.
Yeah.
All right, so Ms. Adelaide, however you want to proceed. I do want to check with my colleagues to make sure they have these slides or if they need them for this presentation. I just want to make sure all of my colleagues are good.
Yeah, it's on board docs. I have it up.
That screen is not working. So you guys may have to share the presentation.
I'm happy to, Ms. Howell, if you're unable to, let me know.
Let me see if I can put this in. I want to put it in presentation mode.
Yeah, if you click on the upper right-hand corner where it says slideshow.
Oh, there it is, over there. All right. So that was a wonderful introduction by Chief Howell, and it talks about some of the information in which we're going to share with you all today. And so we're going to just jump right into the slide presentation. And one of the, the first slide that we have here are our purchasing methods. And so these are some of the common purchasing methods that we have with some little highlights on what they actually would mean. And so we have here an invitation for bid, which is a sealed bid procurement for goods and services that the award is determined by the lowest price bidder. And it is typically a firm fixed price contract. There we have the bids that are open publicly, they're tabulated, and then, like I said, the award goes to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. The next one that we use is the Request for Proposal. And we use that when the procurement process in which the price and other factors are to be evaluated to determine the actual award. So this one identifies the scope, you know, the proposal content, the evaluation factors, and the submission requirements. Next, we have our intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreements, which are ICPAs. And then these are procurements that were actually procured by other agencies. And so they could be public entities, but one of the things about these is that they are competitively solicited and awarded by those governmental agencies. Then we have non-bid contracts, and then these are contracts that are on a non-competitive basis that we use. Then we go to the emergency contracts or procurements where we are required to mitigate threat, an active nature, and that they are for the protection of our PGCPS there. And we also have procured sole source and single source contracts where sole source is awarded on a non-competitive basis, where there are only one offerer that can supply this information or this product or service. And then we have a single source where there is, it's also not awarded on a competitive, on a non-competitive basis, but is offered to one actual supplier. So those are just a recap of some of the purchasing methods that we use here at PGCPS. So next, I want to just talk about a little bit about the procurement process. And so one of the things that actually really stick out on this slide is that at the bottom, we have some days, and it says that, you know, we actually do procurements between ten and two hundred days. Actually, ten days would actually get you a purchase order. So I just wanted to make that clear that we cannot issue any of those procurement methods that we had on the prior sheets in ten days. But what we do here in, in procurement is that we plan, you know, what is the need? How can we get our departments, the, the, the contracts that they need to actually prepare and to do the work? Then we go into the preparation where we review the scopes of work, the specifications. We do our independent cost estimates, like we are actually preparing how, which one of those procurement methods would best satisfy the need of that particular request. Then we would do a solicitation, and so those solicitations would be, we could request for a quote, we can request for an RFP, we can issue an IFB, it could be a, a an ICPA agreement, emergency or a non-bid, single or sole source. After that, we would evaluate, we would award it, and then we would base that on our the criteria that is established in either the purchasing manual or in the Board Policy. And then here's the last step that we would do is that, you know, we would issue that purchase order so that those goods and services could actually be obtained by those end-user departments. So then that is the funding and the payment process, and that's the entire process. In a nutshell of what we do here in purchasing. And so we talk about, you know, timelines, and so how, what is it that we actually do? So those are the checkmarks of what is that, that we do for a Request for Proposal. Of course, we talked about that there's planning, there's solicitation, there's an award, there's a payment. How long does that usually take? That usually takes about seven months to actually get from the very first stage all the way to where we are to actually award the contract. If, and we can, and you all can see the checkmarks, and we can go through all of them. But if it requires Board approval, then that adds two and a half months to the process. And then so the next column, it talks about the total time that it would take if we were to include Board approval for these different types of, of contracts. And we'll get into some more of the details a little bit later, but just really wanted to provide you all an overview of the process and then just the timelines that it takes internally for the purchasing department to issue solicitations, ICPAs, and also just non-bid contracts. So we just wanted to give you that timeline so that you could see. And then you can see how requiring the Board approval would actually what that timeline looks like as well. All right, so then we come to our procurement thresholds. And here in this chart, and I'm not going to read all of them, but here in the chart, it does spell out some of the requirements that we use when we're looking at these threshold documents. And so what you see is, you know, we have our micro purchases. And then when we do the micro purchases, that formal solicitation is not required. We just get a price quote from accredited vendor, and then they are, we are able to issue a purchase order so that those products, goods and services can be actually obtained by those end-users. When we get into the next category, that is when it is required for one written quote. We do strongly encourage that we would get a quote from an MBE vendor. But those are strongly required, or encouraged to be able to get. And then once you get into the fifteen thousand to forty-nine nine nine nine, that is when we are to obtain three written quotes and that we are to award those. But we definitely also make sure that we award to, or that we get a quote from an MBE vendor. That is definitely highly encouraged. Above fifty thousand, that is when a formal solicitation should be issued. And so the departments would contact purchasing and that we would actually prepare solicitation based on those methods that we looked and we saw in earlier slides. On the side here, we talk about the state financing, Article thirteen dash one oh nine, when it talks about and describes the small purchase procurements. And they have increased their dollar threshold from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. So any solicitation over a hundred thousand would require a formal solicitation. Right now, PGCPS's total is fifty thousand. When we go and we look at the educational article five dash one one two, when it talks about the formal bids, again, as it relates to school buildings, our school buildings, improvement supplies, equipment in excess to a hundred thousand dollars. Those are requirement of formal solicitations with the exceptions of textbooks and structural material, emergency repairs, participation in contracts issued by other agencies, and those are the things that we've been referring to as the ICPAs. And then it also talks about current thresholds for formal solicitation procurements of fifty thousand is it for accept? I'm sorry, this next bullet is about what we have currently in our thresholds, which is formal bids for anything over fifty thousand dollars with the exception of textbooks and instructional materials, because currently that is at a million dollars in our procurement manual. Let me move this over so I can see. And then the instructional and staff development is currently at five hundred thousand. Professional services at two hundred and fifty, emergency repairs, single source, and sole source procurements. And so that is the difference between what we have in the educational article and then what we have actually in our current version of our purchasing name. So now we're going to turn our attention to the current formal bid approvals. And so currently, the purchasing director approves all contracts awarded to the lowest evaluated bidder, and that is with an IFB. For an RFP, the purchasing director can approve all contracts awarded to the lowest evaluated proposer or the highest technical, lowest price offerer. And so that is what we have currently there. If an IFB cannot be awarded to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, that requires Board approval. And then also if a RFP, which is a Request for Proposal, cannot be awarded to the highest technically lowest response, lowest price responsive, responsible bidder, then that also requires approval by the Board. We wanted to include this note here because this note says that when we are looking at the ICPAs, they're not referenced in the, in the current Board Policy Administrative Procedure. Because we know that these contracts were awarded under their issuing agency, where that we know that there were competitive process was done on those ICPAs before. When they are awarded by their generating company or. All right, and so now I get to take a break, and we're going to go over some of the details of what the data looks like, and now I'm going to turn that over to Chief Howell.
Thank you, Director Johnson. So this chart here gives some insight, looking at the full year's worth of data and the types of procurements that were processed in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. This just gives some insight into the volume and what it looks like depending on the dollar threshold. Certainly, as you can imagine, the majority of our procurements that we process from a transaction standpoint are for our small procurements that are less than fifty thousand dollars. So we've got over twelve hundred procurements we processed in two thousand and twenty-four. We have a fair amount of ICPAs as well. Then you get into some of our exceptions that do not require formal bids, our contracted services for professional services, instructional or staff development contracted services. We've got, you know, ninety-five of those for professional and sixty for instructional and staff development. We also have the other exception, our instructional materials less than a million, five fifty-five transactions there. And they kind of draw your attention to the middle. Those are the ones that go through a competitive bidding process, and you can see in total between IFBs and RFPs, it's about forty-eight transactions. The majority of the IFBs are approved by the purchasing director based off of the current guidance and our current Board Policy. But a couple of them did have to go to Board approval. The majority of the RFPs actually did require approval by the Board with only a few being approved under the authority of the Director based off of the criteria outlining the current Board Policy. And then, of course, we have a few emergency procurements, sole and single source. We also have another category on here that's not specifically called out in our current Board Policy, but it came out in the data, and we wanted to spend some time talking about it today, and that's the field trips and school events that are greater than fifty thousand dollars, and then we have a few other large procurements as well. So overall, in total for two thousand and twenty-four, we had over sixteen hundred procurements. Around thirty of those would go to the Board for approval, and the rest of those fall under the authority of the purchasing director. So on the next slide, we want to look at the dollar value tied with these procurements, and so the story is a little bit different. So while in terms of the transaction volume, small procurements makes up the majority of our transactions. From a dollar standpoint, the majority of our procurement value actually resides in our ICPAs. And so that is really a great tool for us to leverage to be able to take advantage of competitively bid pricing that has already been negotiated to be able to get that benefit for us as a district. It is a fine balance between leveraging those contracts that have already gone through a bidding process versus determining whether or not we have the opportunity to do a competitive bid ourselves and possibly get even better pricing. But we do leverage those quite a bit, and you can see those are around a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. The next big category in terms of spend is really with the competitive bids. So for the IFBs and the RFPs, those make up another substantial portion of the procurement value that we have had in two thousand and twenty-four. And then you get into some of the other categories. So the instructional and staff development contracted services, that's around eleven million dollars. Professional contracted services, that's eight point seven million dollars. Small procurements, high transaction volume, but the dollar value is not as significant. And then some of the other categories are a little bit smaller as well. The ones denoted with an asterisk are the ones that we're going to talk about in a little bit more detail where there's currently a proposal to reduce the dollar threshold. So contracted services right now is at two fifty, but there's discussion of lowering that threshold to one fifty that would prompt a competitive bid and approval by the Board. And for the instructional and staff development, bringing that down from five hundred to two fifty. We also wanted to talk about the sole source and single source procurements, which currently right now, based off of the way it's the language in the purchasing manual, those fall under the authority of the purchasing director. And then we have this other category that I mentioned earlier about field trips or school events greater than fifty. So we can go on to the next slide. All right, so wanted to talk a little bit about the impacted change, one of the impacted changes for, based off of their current proposed policy for the professional contracted services threshold. So again, right now, the current policy is less than two fifty is under the Director of the Purchasing Office or Purchasing Director. So we want to look at those that are between one fifty and two fifty. Should we lower that threshold or what that would actually mean? And so as you can see, we've got about nineteen, based off of last year's data, nineteen different contracts that were awarded for a value of point, three point nine million dollars. And you can see the majority of those are within the Office of the General Counsel as well as operations. So right now, in Education Article five on one two, it does outline a formal bid process specifically relating to school buildings, improvements, supplies and equipment in excess of a hundred thousand, but it doesn't specifically speak to services. And so as Generica pointed out earlier, we do have our own Board Policy that sort of governs services. And that threshold is, you know, we're talking about that now for professional contracted services is two fifty. So if we were to lower the threshold from two fifty to one fifty, that would increase the number of procurements that would have to go through a competitive process and go to the Board for approval, and that would primarily have an impact, as I said, on General Counsel, which can be challenging because oftentimes they need to be able to react to, you know, various legal matters that arise that require a specific level of expertise. And so having the ability to procure that additional support on a timely basis is important. And same thing on the operation side as well. So if we look at, if we look towards reducing or lowering the threshold from two fifty to one fifty, that would increase the procurement timeline from one month to six and a half months. So certainly would have an impact on operations, and then you can see some of the other areas there as well, academics, IT, human resources, et cetera. If we go on to the next slide. Gets into the next bucket threshold that's being considered for change. So for instructional and staff, instructional or staff development contracted services, reducing that threshold from five hundred thousand to two fifty would increase the number of contracts or procurements that we need to go through a competitive bidding process and go to the Board for approval. The dollar value for two thousand and twenty-four would have been close to six million dollars. And so again, an impact of going from a one-month procurement cycle to a six-and-a-half-month procurement cycle beginning to end. For this particular threshold category, the impact primarily is going to be for schools or in direct support of schools. So whether it's the schools issuing the procurement itself or school support and leadership, primarily the area offices that are doing this on behalf of the schools that they serve. So again, definitely has an impact and kind of slowing down what that process would look like. And just really adjust the way we would have to approach planning for being able to secure the services that that's needed in this area. On the next slide. There was also discussion around increasing the threshold potentially for instructional materials and supplies. So right now, it's less than a million dollars. We were looking to have that potentially increase to less than two million dollars. So wanted to look to see what was between that one and two million dollar mark. As you can see, we don't have very many procurements within that time, within that band. There's only been a couple in two thousand and twenty-four in which that occurred. We would be completely fine with either leaving the policy at less than a million dollars or increasing it to two million dollars. It's not going to really vary or swing it that much. So it would potentially result in too fewer procurements going to the Board for review and approval. Certainly, if we were to increase this threshold, this would still be disclosed in the quarterly reporting that's being reflected in the current proposed policy, so there would be visibility into these contracts that would be considered for, for execution. For execution. Going on to the next slide, the next bucket relates to single and sole source procurements. And this is an area that we're continuing to just want to better understand and make sure that we're clear. On the governance around what this looks like. As stated earlier, our purchasing manual, sort of our detailed roadmap in terms of how we execute certain procurements, procurements. Our board policy and our AP don't specifically speak to sole source or single source procurements. But it is in the purchasing manual. And in the purchasing manual, it specifically refers to services that could be executed. Under this procurement method. And then, as you can see here in twenty twenty four, it's certainly not one of our largest procurement options. It is exercise on an occasional basis. But it's not the preferred direction that we tend to go in. The team does a really good job and really supporting a competitive bidding process. But when there has been determined to be a valid justification, this is something that has been considered. In the past. And again, education article doesn't specifically speak to services. It's really up to the individual government units to determine what makes the most sense. For their district. So right now, the way that it's. Worded or or lack of wording that's in the purchasing manual, it doesn't specifically refer to a dollar threshold around single or sole source procurements. It doesn't specifically refer to a process that requires or mandates review and approval by the board. It has been a practice of this function of this office for. Years before predates myself and Director Johnson, that this has been the practice that has been under the authority of the purchasing director. And so as we look at what has occurred for twenty twenty four, you can see the majority of those procurements that have gone through. This procurement option have been in the operations area. There's was one that was issued for technology. And typically it is around supporting some of our construction work or building services. Where this becomes more of an exercised option. Because of the requirement to maybe leverage or utilize certain skill or expertise of vendors that we've used in the past. In some cases, it could be maybe a single provider. But there's multiple options to choose from, but there's rationale as to why they want to go with one of the several. Or there could be cases where perhaps there's just a sole provider associated with these procurements. So if this were to be a change that would require formal bidding. It would be similar impact of going from a one month to six and a half months. In order to support those that would have to go through a formal bidding process. If it's a single source, if it's a sole source. You know, depending on how this would be considered, would increase that timeline from one month to three and a half months. So there certainly would be an impact, but we don't have a lot of procurements that go through this option here. Onto the next slide. This is a much smaller category, but it stood out nonetheless. There were some procurements in twenty twenty four. That were greater than fifty thousand dollars. But it didn't really fall in one of the other categories. But we do have some cases where our procurements. In in an effort to support operations for schools. Where they have gone beyond that threshold and particularly it's around school events and different activities. It could be a field trip. It could be a prom, it could be other types of activities. And so. Right now, this has really been under the purview of the purchasing director to go through the the process of understanding the justification. And and helping to support those procurements. So they have not gone through a competitive bidding process. If you look at, you know, the procurement threshold that's outlined in the finance and procurement article. That threshold of a hundred thousand, these would fall well below that threshold. But for us, with our policy being closer to fifty. This would become not really practical. To really go through a competitive bidding process if you're trying to secure a venue for a prom or something along those lines. So just wanted to kind of highlight this. Again, we don't have many procurements that fall in this category. But there were some that came out of the data that we looked at for twenty twenty four. And that is it. So. At a high level, and I know we went through some of the slides when we were looking at categories where we're looking at changes. If you think back to the earlier slide where we were really focusing on the number of competitive bids that we actually had in twenty twenty four, it was around forty-eight. When you go through the exceptions and possibly reducing this threshold. That would result in more procurements coming over to the board office. It's about double the amount of what we're currently doing now. So in order to support the threshold change. Without any additional staffing or resources. We would still be able to get through about forty-five-ish or so procurements within a year with the current time that. With the turn current team that we have in place. Now, keep in mind, we are still barely scratching the surface in some of our process improvement efforts. And so we are looking to gain. Some efficiencies as we continue with this work. But certainly in the short term, all else being equal. We would essentially be doubling the amount of competitive bids that this team would be responsible for supporting. Which would certainly have an impact on operations as a whole for the district. As well as, you know, the amount of procurements that would go to the board as well. That would be part of your approval process. So I will pause here at this point in time and we will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Howell and Director John, Chief Howell and Director Johnson for coming before the committee. And offering a presentation. Shortly here, we're going to take questions from the committee members or comments that they have. And so I I do want to, just for the sake of the public. We did ask these folks to come back and give us a presentation around the impact of the policy change. These thresholds that you hear. It was a couple of months ago. I actually asked to modify this policy to lower these thresholds. Largely because many of our, largely because of findings in our OLA report. And 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 also because of our neighboring districts who have strong calls and strong governance around contracting authority. So that we can be good stewards of our local dollars, our neighboring district that's just a, that's larger than us, everything is fifty thousand. And we're not as as as. As hard in our policy. So in the process of that, these these folks went and spent a lot of time. Bringing the impact of this to us as a committee. So at this time, I will yield a floor to my colleagues. I've got some specific comments as it relates to this that I'll go in the first round, but there will be two rounds tonight. And I'm happy to start now and we will make every effort to stick to the two and a half minutes colleagues. As we have a full agenda tonight. So we'll we'll begin with our first round. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? With first round of questions or comments. Uh, board member Walker.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm happy to lead the way with questions. So thank you so much, Ms. Howell and Ms. Johnson. This was really good. This was all of the information. I know I specifically asked, what would it mean for overall timelines? And I'll just share now what I see here. This was really good. It puts it in perspective for me and something I can actually share with my community as well. But colleagues, I'm, I am concerned. I mentioned it before about timing and while I am, I know that. Part of our, largely part of our responsibilities is to be good fiscal stewards of the school board's money. The school system's money and make sure that we have oversight over that. That is extremely important. I think we have some opportunity to take a look at. Bids that go from seven months that add two and a half months. All of these add two and a half months for board approval. So we have some opportunity to figure out what can we do differently, if any. Learning from other processes, but I think that might take time and inquiry to find out. I do appreciate that we take a look at our neighbors because that's best practice sharing. But I also sometimes believe that we have to look and make sure it's apples to apples or figure out how they're doing it successfully inside of their own agendas. I am concerned at the agenda that we do have inside of our executive board meetings. Or public meetings and making sure that we have the allotted time to be able to do that effectively. One opportunity, I have one minute left, but one opportunity I could see potentially is to allow the approval to take place. But be very strict on the reporting out of what these were and what those. Contracts were and what they were approved for. So that is an opportunity. I know it gets us to be reactive versus proactive, but I think that we can have some conversations around this. To ensure that we can see those, which I think was one of the problems is that we don't have the visibility to some of these contracts upfront. And I think that we can be creative to do that as well as still getting the work done for the Board of Education.
Uh, Vice Chair Briggs.
Thank you, Committee Chair Moss. I want to echo what Board Member Walker shared. I think. I guess what I'm taking from this is that I'm thinking about intent. What's the purpose behind the changes that we want to make? And are there other ways to the language that was used, creative solutions to address that? And I think we can pull out the information that is essential for. Various departments to report out on. If there are things that we're concerned about, when we think about seeing those big dollar values. We can have that information and we can include that language in this policy to ensure that we're getting those reports quarterly on those things. And I think that could address some of the issues and concerns around fiscal management, which is obviously very important. And and I wonder if maybe, I I just want to also echo the point that we have, we are, we're the board members, so we have the authority to. Add this back to the work plan. If this is something that we want to revisit. And so I do think that this is something that if we put it and we implement it and it doesn't work the way that we're hoping. Then I think we can always revisit it. But I I think about the intent behind why and also the variable concerns of timing that do exist.
Thank you, Vice Chair Briggs. I'll take a moment and take my comments here. I am hypersensitive to to workload and work demands. What I do want to surface is I I respect the administration's intent of talking about the length of time that it will take. What is central to a strong procurement process is someone who's worked in the district is adequate planning. And so with adequate planning, you reduce the backend of having to take so long or the impact of not having something. When you need it. Conversely, we have a policy around emergency procurements. That would allow you in the event that you need something immediately and you cannot follow our traditional process. Then you lay those out. And quite honestly, board members, we we haven't talked about single and sole source. But we've had some challenges with that just as recently. And it's been retroactive rather than proactive. There are steps that. Ms. Howell, I heard you say we didn't have really a board policy to speak to this. Comar, Comar is very clear. Around what we should be doing around single and sole source and when that comes before the board. I've also been on boards to have a much longer window for contracts that are like two hundred and fifty thousand and the like. Boards are seeing them one month and getting two, you know, thirty to sixty days before that contract comes out. And so I hear the timeline argument, but I also want to be. Sensitive to the fact that planning is important when it comes to procurement. And that's how we be good stewards. Of the school district dollars. And my final comments, I'll address the notion of apples. To to apples. Well, actually, Montgomery County has way more procurements than we have. They are the largest system in the state. And they found some way to do this. I actually think we do a better job. I mean, they they say fifty thousand or above everything. We at least have some delineation here and we give folks a little bit more breathing room in our policy. But at a time where folks are concerned about how we're spending dollars, I think it's overwhelmingly important for us to. You know, show our good faith and and manage this. We we have a number of responsibilities as a board. But we have a strong fiduciary responsibility, be good stewards of the dollars in our district. And I think that begins. With contracting authority. Since twenty twenty-three, we've had over twenty sole or single source contracts. And honestly, you could review the list of them and they don't all appear to be only the only vendor. The justifications. Are not as strong. And so taking a reactive approach, I don't know that I can support. I think a proactive posture. Is the best thing that we can do, but that that is my comment as it relates to the policy. Anyone else for a first round? All right, um, Board Member Walker has raised their hand, so we'll move to a second round.
Absolutely. I don't want you nor the public to misunderstand what I'm saying here. Fiscal responsibility is one of our core attributes, one of our core responsibilities. Being proactive is absolutely the first thing that we want to do. I also want to be realistic to learn what are the best practices that we can leverage in order to get to the end state. And what it feels like the end state is, and I know you can be, you can leverage your time in order to talk about this. What it feels like the end state is, is to be fiscally responsible and be stewards of our finances within PGCPS and the Board of Education. And I am all for that. I think what would help us is to learn from those districts that you do talk about. So if it is for us to ask someone there to talk about what are the best practices that you might use in order to ensure that you can get. All of your business done for the Board of Education. I'm happy to to listen to those and see how we can apply those. We could have potentially our Ms. Howell on the call. So we could understand how can we lend this into our systems before we put together a process that we might not fully understand the overall impact. I think they're closer to the work in that it behooves us to really just put a little bit more work in this so that we understand. When I take a look at things like. Two and a half months added on to a process. What I will say is time is only one aspect of this. I would look at the money as well because money is important. We do need to see those and I think that a process that we could leverage is being able to in advance, right? So maybe they know in advance, I'm taking a look at this, the director of purchases has seven months. So at some point, we should be able to, as a board, take a look collectively at what contracts are coming up. Around this threshold and talk to us about what those are so that we can give our questions and potential solutions to those. Or just say, hey, we're going to have an issue with this, the same way that we did, we have done previously. I think our opportunities that we can so that we can make the best of the time that we have, the resources that we have. And the business that we need to do overall for PGCPS. That's that's my piece. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other colleagues have a second round of comments before I. I do, I, Board Member Walker, I know you might be expecting me to respond to that first request, so I will. Send it there another comments for folks. I think I think you're right. We've actually been fortunate. Director Johnson actually came from Montgomery County. And so we do have an opportunity to learn from whatever challenges they had with their low thresholds and what opportunities we can learn from them. I I certainly support that work. I don't know that that is cause not to advance the policy. In that we still have, this still has to go out for public comment and the like. So we do have a bit of runway to continue learning around the work. But I think you're right, Board Member Walker, around learning a little bit more around how districts are managing this, how other boards are managing this. I think we can, I think we can do that. I think that's important to do and. This policy has a couple of more steps to go before it's actually the official policy of the board and that's, that's, that's great to make us aware. Anyone else want to add? Board Member Le- Levo, I know you are here. I don't know if you wanted to jump in. I know we've done our rounds, but I want to extend to board members that are on. I think I saw Board Member Goins McCants too. But I wanted to extend to at least the two of you, if you're here, if you wanted to jump in, although you're not committee members yet. Did you all want to jump in or raise questions or concerns or say anything?
Thank you, Chair Moss. I am fine. Thank you.
All right. And I thought I saw Board Member Goins McCants. I, maybe I didn't, but. Ms. Ms. Welsh and Ms. Howell, I see both your hands, so I want to make sure I acknowledge you all.
Ms. Howell, why don't you, Chief Howell, why don't you go first? Because I do want to share that I have made some changes to the policy in relation to the data that we found. And I want to go over this with you first, but I think she may have something to add first before I do that, so.
Yes, I, one thing that we can certainly provide to members of this committee, if you don't have it already, we do have a summary of what other districts are doing across the state. Montgomery County is actually one of the most restrictive LEAs in the state, but. Most of the other LEAs sort of vary, they more align with the current thresholds within the Comar legislation or somewhere or some variation thereof. So it does get very indifferent. So I'd be happy to share that with you. So you have that information. And then the only other item that I was going to mention was really around the language in the legislation currently that speaks to the competitive bidding process. That really is around goods. So equipment, materials, goods, not so much services. And that's where the districts have a little bit more flexibility to determine what makes sense. Even from a single or sole source procurement standpoint, and we have leveraged both here, as I said historically. In the past, right, wrong or indifferent, but that's been, you know, kind of the practice that we put in place here. I do think that there is an opportunity. I think we all are looking for the same thing. That at the end of the day, to ensure we're getting the best value for our limited doc, limited dollars. I mean, you're speaking to the budget person here. So we certainly want to be able to stretch that dollar as far as we can. And we want to make sure that we're securing the best pricing, that we're taking advantage of. Bundling our procurements. I mean, looking at this data has been really eye-opening and identifying opportunities where we can ensure. That for a district of this size, we're using our buying power to make sure that we are getting the best pricing that we can. So I think there's definitely an opportunity for us to work together to make sure that we're working towards that common goal.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ms. Howell. Ms. Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ms. Howell. Ms. Welsh, did you want to go ahead and review the policy?
Yes, Cindy, did you get your sharing capacity up? Does it work now? I just saw her up there on there.
Yeah, it's just showing me a bunch of question marks.
Let me see if I can, I don't have this up on my computer because I have, I have several things going on here, computer screens and stuff. So I want, I want
Ms. Welsh, could you talk us through it? I believe, I believe board members have the item on board docs and they could use it in the interest of time. We, I know we have
I can do that.
All right, thank you.
So when, just to give you a little bit of background, when you looked at the chart to see that there are different procurements that were approved at the, by Director Johnson, many of these actually were actually below, were above what the threshold was. And what came, we had many conversations about this. And what came to light is that there was an understanding, and I think this came, again, came exactly from what Chief Howell was sharing, is that the, all the players left that originally wrote the policy as well as were interpreting the policy. And so all the new players come in and they're believing it's one thing because they've been told by the other ones, this is how it is. When the reality is, it wasn't quite the same. So there were two provisions, oh, two provisions in the policy. If you keep scrolling down, Cindy, or whoever has it in front of us right now. And I don't know what that is. That, I mean, that is something we added because of OLA, but keep scrolling down a little bit further. Keep going. Keep going, you're going to get to, so this provision four, this is new language, and this comes directly out of Education Article five dash one, one, two. And it basically says that a contract for school building improvements, supplies or other equipment shall be awarded to the responsible builder or offer who provides the best value and conforms to the specifications with consideration given to. And then it lists out all these different things, which gives the, when anything is going to be procured formally, that allows for the system to be able to take into account like the best technical value and also the best price. And there's times, and many times actually, where we have, end up going for best technical value over best price because it's actually meets our needs much more than, much better than, than something with price. But this language here is replacing, now if you scroll down, it should be in the next page and you'll see it and keep going. You'll see it in green on the right. If you, can you scroll over so you can see over here on the right? Oh, I guess go up a little bit. It should be a green. Keep scrolling up a little. Yeah, this is interesting. I have to say this document
Hey Cindy, can you go back to page seven of twelve? And let us see everything to your far right. So on seven of twelve, everything to your
There it is. Oh, you're right. There it is. That's what I was trying to get. Okay, you could scroll up a little. Thank you. And I think it might be a little bit further. Is there one above that one or is that the first green thing? Okay, that will keep going down where that green is. Thank you. So that, this is, was taken, deleted. And I did work also with General Counsel on this, so that you know, so to make sure it was accurate. But one of the things that says here that if, if for any reason the contract cannot be awarded to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder who's bid meets the requirements and evaluation criteria and so forth in the IFB specifications is the most favorable the evaluated bid price, the recommendations shall be approved by the board prior to awarding the contract. But the superintendent designee shall fully advise the board as to the reasons for not recommending award to the lowest responsive, 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 responsible bidder. And then it says, if for any reason the contract cannot be awarded to the highest rated technical responsible and responsive proposal, scroll down, please. There you go. That award recommendation shall be approved by the, prior to awarding the contract. And the superintendent designee shall fully advise the board as to the reasons for not recommending the award to the highest technical responsible and responsive proposal. And then all contracts awarded to the highest rated technically responsible and responsive proposal shall be approved by the superintendent designee, the Director of Purchasing and Supply Services. So what has happened in the past, and this has been historically been going on probably prior to even our twenty-two, the verse, the twenty-two version, because this is old language, is that anything that was awarded to the highest rated technically responsible bidder or proposal or whatever, that, that never went to the board regardless of the threshold. So that's why, so what's happening is, and that's why you saw even with the sole source, with the one, the one contract you have referred to, Dr. Moss, is that it did not go through that, that process. And, and, and many of them haven't. And that's because, number one, I think we're all interpreting that the thresholds drove everything. But the people that have been here from before and what's been passed down and just the change of personnel over and over again, it's come to light that, that, that is like an exception in the language. So what, I took all that out because what really needs to be, certainly the system has, needs to have the flexibility to consider both like the technically best proposal as well as, you know, the, the best price. All those things have to be into consideration when you're determining which, which one you're going to choose. But regardless, the threshold should drive what's going to the board. That, that's, that should be the standard. Like if anything above the fifty thousand or the one fifty thousand or the one million, then it should go to the board. So that's why you see that change in the language, so that in the future, there will be no, no confusion over. And it doesn't matter what type of contract, it just will come through to the board. But saying that, and you saw the numbers that Chief Howell shared with you, it will increase your work significantly. Because there's, there's not, a much larger number of contracts are going to be coming through to you that did come before. So that's just another factor considered in terms of the extra, the extra time that'll be spent in board meetings, looking at the contracts. So that's the one change. And then Cindy, if you can scroll down further. Keep going. I think it's at the very end. This is in green. Wait, stop a minute. Let's see what this is. Oh, I did take this out because of the, the minimum six percent. Because if in fact, by saying you absolutely are just going to go flat with minority business owners to, or enterprises to be awarded contracts that can usurp the actual, the competitive bidding process, which then puts us out of compliance with five dash one, one, two, which we actually talked about at the last meeting in terms of actually having a set limit. So I just wanted to let you know, I did take that out. And then if you scroll down further, there is under implementation responsibilities. So this is, we added this thing. The superintendent shall include language in the administrative procedure that requires written justification for sole source procurement contracts awarded pursuant to Comar twenty-one, oh, five, oh, five, oh, two and oh, four, and written assessments to documents that documents the benefit of using an ICPA. So we wanted to make sure that that is in the administrative procedure that is actually in alignment with the OLA recommendations with their findings and what we are required to do in our corrective action plan. So, and then I did add for legal citations, those citations that you see over there on the left. So those were the changes that I made.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welsh, for uplifting those. Again, thank you, Ms. Howell and Director Johnson for coming to tonight's presentation. On thirty-three, twenty-three, the planning policy. So the question is, shall the committee, and I, I do want to flag one thing. When we say our workload, all of our contracts currently go to the consent agenda and it's pulled if a board member has a question about them. So I do just want to clarify for the general public that, that there, right now, our current process is any contract that supersedes the authority above what's already in board policy, it simply goes to the consent agenda for board members to review and actually vote on. There is no lone process where we're spending time going through each contract. It does go to our consent agenda. But the question is, shall the committee recommend Policy thirty-three, twenty-three, purchasing to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Ms. Adelaide, could you please take the roll call?
Dr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Hi.
Ms. Boozer Shredder?
Hi.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
They are affirmatively affirmative.
Policy thirty-three, twenty-three will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Ms. Welsh, if you could provide us with the legislative update?
Before we go forward, can I just, is it appropriate for me to just ask? I know, I feel like sometimes we make statements, but then we don't have an opportunity to add in. And maybe when it does come, I'm not asking for it to be said here on this meeting. But maybe when it does come forward, Ms. Howell can help us understand the two and a half months estimation. Because I just think both of those were contrary, just so we could all understand the length of time addition. That would be super helpful. Perfect, thanks.
Did you get all of it?
No, I had others, but I could just write it in the track.
You can, go ahead.
I just want to make sure, because I'm, I'm, listen, I'm all here for us to make sure that we can actually have oversight over more. I just think we need to be, especially in this climate, be extremely intentional on what it is we're spending money on. So I'm a fan of that. I was just wondering also, when I look at the, the steps, there's this evaluate process. And how can we, the board, be a part of that process? Because that might help a little bit. But all of my thoughts in order to condense it and improve it, I can talk to Ms. Howell offline about if that's okay.
Yeah, and that might be, and just to be transparent, Board Member Walker, I think you're one thousand percent correct. It might be safe to let her take care of that in administrative procedure. I, I don't also want to, so I, I hear why you're saying that because it might be good for admin procedure rather than board policy, so that we're not further complicating their work. So I think you're right. Ms. Howell, did you have anything else in closing? Or did you want to address Board Member Walker's comments or concerns? I want to make sure I give you space.
I appreciate the time, be able to come back on to have any closer remarks. I'm just looking forward to working with this team collectively to come up with the best policy on a going forward basis. I do want to yield to Director Johnson, because she might be able to address the two and a half months. So though you maybe don't have to do a board tracker, so maybe she can give you a quick answer right now. Or, because you know, that tracker is wearing us out a little bit, but that's okay. We're getting through.
The general public doesn't know about that tracker, but, but go ahead, Director Johnson, take the time you need here.
All right, in addressing the, the two and a half months, that is really the time that it takes from the time that we have, that we've selected, whatever the contract method is, because there is the selection process in everything in which we actually award. And so from that point, then we work with the departments so that they can craft the board action summary. That board action summary goes through many layers of review. It actually starts at the purchasing level because purchasing has to make sure that the information and the recommendation of award is in alignment with our Comar, our rules, our regulations, our, our manuals and all of the work that we've put in to get that procurement at that particular point. And then how it travels for the different reviews, because there are financial reviews. There are other reviews that it would go to before it is actually submitted to the board to be placed on the agenda. So that in addition to, you know, when that meeting is going to happen. And then after that, we've also attached some time to that of when those board action summaries are returned to those end user departments. Because then after that is when we actually would issue the contracts, which are notices of award so that they can go out to the vendors at that point. So that is just a quick snapshot of some of the things that are inside of that timeline.
And the only other thing I'll add to that is that as we're going through, whatever decision is made, there's, and there's going to be a transition period of time, right? If we go from a current practice to wherever the practice is going to be on a going forward basis. So in addition to the transformation work that we're trying to do, regardless of what happens to the board policy, you're now also going to shift a very large organization to, to your point, you have to really do planning and do your work very, very differently. And it's, it's not easy to shift a large organization like this on a dime like that. So it will be an initial transition backlog to kind of get us to where we need to be. So we're planning for this on a going forward basis. So I do look at that initial transition period. There's going to be some bottleneck and making sure that the work aligns with the board calendar to make sure we get everything on time. So it's, it's going to require some effort to get through to where we want this to work on a, on a well-oiled basis. But initially, it's going to be, it is going to be a little bit of a logjam.
Thank you all for coming. And I just want to say to the general public, Chief Howell just assumed the function. I know she said it in the beginning, but if you weren't here in the beginning, this office has moved a bit. And so, and Director Johnson is fairly new in her role. So thank you all for taking this on and, and, and really doing an analysis of prior practices. I know we've asked a lot from you all, like pulling all these things, but it sounds like you also found gaps in your work. So it will help you figure out how to structure the system moving forward. So thank you all for your engagement tonight. And Chief Howell, I'm going to let you go. I know we got you tomorrow night too. So enjoy your family at some point.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right. At this time, we will move to the legislative update. I'm going to recognize both Board Member Walker. I'll recognize Board Member Walker first and then Ms. Welsh, or I don't know if y'all plan together around Eric's Law. But I do know we have Eric's Law and then we have Legislative Day. So if y'all plan together, go in whatever order. But if not, Board Member Walker, you can start with Eric's Law. And then Director Welsh, you can talk about Legislative Day. Is that how, did y'all plan together?
We're going to knock it out right now.
I got you. All right, here we go.
Yes, absolutely. So Eric's Law, I, listen, I post about it all the time because it just excites me about it. So Eric's Law really is a law that was passed last legislative session around hidden disabilities. And the intention literally is to put a butterfly, although I hear that's under some discussion right now, but to put an icon, let's say, on either an ID or driver's license. So if a driver, in our case, our high schoolers or beyond are driving and they have a hidden disability that the officer or whoever they're talking to, even MVA will, will recognize that there is a hidden disability with this person and hopefully be able to engage them either in a little more intentionally. Is the intention of the law. So that did pass. And I know before it passed, we did have discussions as a committee just on how can we recognize Eric and Eric's Law? Because obviously it does impact scholars who are driving. It could potentially have a very positive impact on them. And I know at the time, what, what we decided as a collective was it hadn't become a law yet. And we just want to be careful on how we engage early on things that are not directly tied to education. Therefore, we didn't move forward with any type of recognition. But I would love to encourage us to, at this particular time, really to acknowledge it. What does that look like? I guess we could talk about it. Maybe it's just a certificate of appreciation for knowing that it will impact some of our scholars, even though it wasn't an education bill. So Ms. Rob, Ms. Welsh, I don't know how you feel about that. I feel like we talked about this in the past. But it's for anybody of driver's age or that has an ID that has a hidden disability. And we know that some of our scholars fit that population. Ms. Welsh, I'm turning it over to you.
Okay, so I, I, and maybe I'm not totally understanding what you're thinking. But I was, the only thing I could think of it though, is that I don't know if our parents, our parents of our students are aware of this. So that, which I think for some of our students, you know, that might be an important thing. Because, you know, they get their driver's permit when they're sixteen. And then now the law says when they turn eighteen, they may choose not to have that on their, on their license. They can then have it removed. And, you know, different people are funny about wanting others to know that they have a disability. So that, so it is a personal choice once they turn eighteen. But prior to that, it may be very helpful because, you know, students, children, kids as from sixteen, seventeen up to eighteen, their frontal lids aren't necessarily developed anyway. And then if they are dealing with any kind of intellectual types of issues or something, this could be a benefit for them. So I, I was just thinking, I don't, and I wouldn't, we would have to talk about how you would want to go about it. But it might be something that we would want to let parents, you know, make, you know, make parents aware of this, that this is something when they go to that this is something when they go to MVA, they can absolutely request it. Um, it also might be something for the Disabilities Advisory uh Committee to have conversation, to discuss then and, and move forward to be able to um, you know, just, I, it's really about making parents aware. This is a, an opportunity for them. And when they go in, when the parents go in to get, you know, with it, to get the driver's license or whatever, they, they, the um MVA cannot request, will give us proof that there is a, a disability of any type. So it wouldn't be necessarily like the parents have to feel like they're being, you know, um questioned and all this other stuff, or they have to provide this proof. But they certainly can be, and I'm sure it's a major concern for, for parents of students who do have disabilities, especially ones that are not a parent, you know. Um, so I mean, I was thinking that might be something that we might want to do to, to really help make the bill, the law more functional um and help parents, help these students access this. This was what I was thinking in my mind when I read through it.
Love it. So as we close this piece uh and turn it back over to the Chair of Policy and Governance, um maybe what we're saying collectively, if you would agree, is that um one, maybe move it over to DIAB um with our recommendation to talk about uh what it means and what their proposal would be for any communication that goes out. Um, coming from that committee and maybe even joining with us as a partnership to send out. I think that that would be a great idea. I put those words in your mouth, so you can correct me there. And then the secondary one, I guess, for us to talk about is um if we could just send a letter of um at least acknowledgement to uh Eric, because it does, we know that it does impact scholars um potentially inside of PGCPS. Would you say yes, that, that, that's a good one for us to talk about, Ms. Welsh? Are you aligned to those two?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, cool, okay.
Um Cindy, um Director Cindy.
Thank you, I do have one question. Board Member Walker, the letter, would it be coming from the Policy and Governance Committee or the full board?
I think we could talk to um Dr. Moss, but I would think from DIAB mixed with Policy and Governance would be sufficient.
Okay.
Okay. That eliminates some layers.
Yeah, and DIAB is coming to the next board meeting too, so um I think we have them coming up on the twenty-sixth for a presentation too. So around some recommendations they have for us. So this might be good for us to say, we'd love to partner with you additionally.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's a tremendous opportunity. And that's Board Member Brown, I believe is the um, the, but no, I, I like all the ideas. Um, and we could go ahead and begin drafting the accommodation to at least acknowledge it too, so. Um, happy to support that. Good work here. Um, Ms. Welsh, do you want to talk about Legislative Day? Um, I'll, I'll make one announcement around Legislative Advocacy Day. I know that uh we may have a, we may have a date change, I think it's important. Um, but um Board Member Walker is going to serve as the lead from P and G on the planning of it with the administration. But would love to hear your updates. I know you've got some information for us, but, and you and I talked about this a little bit already, but would love for you to lead this out, but just wanted to let our committee members know that uh Board Member Walker has graciously um opened herself to
That's great.
serve us uh to, to help us lead out. But here we go, I, I'll turn it over, that's why I asked if y'all playing the Eric's Law thing too. Um, but here you go.
Well, first of all, the date that was chosen that we um had talked about that a couple of months ago for next year was September twelfth. As it turns out, September twelfth is an early dismissal day. So to do it in the morning like we've normally done in a school, uh, that, that, the early dismissal days can sometimes be a little chaotic anyway, because you're changing students' schedules, you know, and, and you know, these kids are coming and going. So to do it in a school in the morning would really probably not be the best thing to do. And so it would either be to think about either doing it in the afternoon of the twelfth or changing the date, or not doing it in a school building and doing another type of building. Um, so that is there are all choices, and since we're working together on this, you know, I've, yeah, I, and I did speak to Quincy about it too, about just um, you know, having the committee talk about it in terms of what they, they think might be the best thing as far as um for, you know, for our schools as well as for legislators, the public, everyone, in terms of what would be the best way to go as far as the date.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to you all, but I do want to flag that a couple of board members wouldn't be able to be there, because we have a national priority going on as it relates to um our governing organization in SBA. So I, I do think it would make sense for us to, to move it, but I have no recommendations of when. Um, I just wanted to flag that our board members would even be impacted by the initial date that we had. But I'm certainly going to turn it over to the committee. Um, if we could take maybe the next five to seven minutes to, to get through this. Uh, and Board Member Walker, I'll turn it over if you want to navigate this part of the conversation.
Yeah, that would be great. I'm really excited about Legislative Day. I think we've been hearing from not only our own committee, but also from legislators that we definitely need to have this earlier in the year, and we have accomplished that, guys. So this is really exciting. I think we can take a look at dates. Um, Fridays usually work well, and so the next one is the nineteenth. Maybe we could put a couple out, um, at least that we can make sure we can get to, make sure we don't have any conflicts, and we can do that. Uh, if you all pull up your calendars, at least we'll have something, a couple of dates that we can go ahead and give to legislators, and we can at least align on. That's one thing we could do tonight. I think the other thing is that, Ms. Welsh, if I could, talk to you offline about the agenda. Another thing that we've heard um is that we want to make sure we have kind of a work session, making sure that people leave with tangibles, and I think we have an opportunity to do that. I'm really excited about it, actually. So I have some ideas, I know John Tell does. Um, why don't I work with you offline and we, the three of us could get together and kind of power through what that day might look like? And then we can send it to the committee, if that's okay? Um, what do you think about that?
No, that would be fine. I was, I was, the only reason I pulled the gen- agenda up was because I, I did have a conversation with Dr. Moss about how we were working, like is, were we going to do it as collaborative type of approach? And so, and because Sept- whatever date we pick in September, it's going to be here before we know it, that it would be helpful. And I do know that there has been conversation about the ag- previous agendas and um, and the conversation in terms of having the opportunity for delegates and senators to be able to talk and engage more and be a part of that process. And I think I even heard it just recently in the county council meeting, uh, there was a conversation about it. So I, I wanted to show what we had from last year, but to say um maybe we should be thinking a different way of doing it for the future.
Yeah, so I'll take the lead from this group. Um, and so what I've done, I've heard from some people, so why don't you, myself and John Tell get together? Um, I know I talked to uh Board Member uh Brown about it too. So we'll just get together in a really small group and be able to uh post it back to this group. If anybody has anything that they'd like for us to consider this week, um, I'll pull something together for this week, so we could get off uh to the horses. But in the meantime, let's just get a couple of dates, if we could go to September, guys, if you have a calendar up. The next date was the nineteenth, that next Friday, how's that look for everybody? Let's try to get two.
It works for me.
Right.
It looks like Board Member Boozer Schrader put her, uh.
Yeah, so did Jonathan, so um Board Member Briggs. So that's great. Um, what about the twenty-sixth? I have on here a potential board retreat that day. So um, okay. But I think we might have an opportunity.
Is that board retreat actually happened, or is that just?
This is a proposed date, but typically we haven't decided a.
Okay, so let's do those two. Um, maybe we could take those offline and then talk about those a little bit um further offline. So that would be the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
And we should look at the school calendar also.
Yep.
Just to make sure there's nothing going on, you know, in schools that day.
Good point, good point. Okay, well, I think that concludes our wrap up. I think for next steps, what we'll do, unless you all had anything additional, is that if there's anything we should talk here, if you have anything that you want us to consider, let's make sure we have that today. Um, also, I'll take offline to get with John Tell and Ms. Welsh this week, so we could just brainstorm an agenda and what the look and feel will look like. I'll um send out an email to our team of where we are, and then we can get to going. We'll lock on the date and um get that at least formatted out, so we could be ready to send it to legislators and then run that by um Chair um Moss. Is that good?
Works for me.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, um, now all of our colleagues can come to Legislative Day, because we, they all started sending emails. So thank you for solving the problem. Um, so let's, uh, Ms. Ms. Welsh, do you have anything rela- anything else related to Legislative Day? Okay.
No, not at this point.
Okay, let's go to four point O Policies for First Consideration. Um, there are eight more items for discussion. There will be two rounds per item, um, with two and a half minutes. If the third round is required, a vote will be taken. What I also want to flag for committee members, um, you can submit um your revision request through the policy recommendation form to save time. I know you, you may have not gotten to them. Um, I know we're working on improving this practice and our weeks have been busy, but I do want to flag for you, it's much, it's, it's helpful with these policies that we get the written feedback to Ms. Welsh um prior to our time together. So I just want to say that much. Now, four point one, um, I'm going to recognize Ms. Welsh for the committee work plan, but what I do want to say to you, um, you know, we will be sending this to the full board, but there are opportunities to revise it, um, the work plan. And I sent you all an email of a draft survey um that you could provide feedback on for the general public to give us feedback on our work plan, to be able to say, these are policies that we should consider, also legislative priorities. So um in whatever spare time you have, because you all have so much, um, if you could provide feedback on that survey. Um, but we do have to, uh, because of our board policy, advance um our committee work plan. And one of the things I'll say to those in the community who are listening, um, you know, your board members, whenever you told them you wanted to see a, a policy revised, we tried to make it fit into the work plan, or when someone came to this committee and we said we need to review that, it's, Ms. Welsh has done an amazing job and Cindy to get this in the work plan. But there will be opportunities to revise the work plan based on that feedback, that survey that we're putting out. So committee members, I know some of you have already given feedback. Um, I, I, I think we need to get that to Cindy by the end of the week, um, but if you need more time, just let me know. But at this time, I'll recognize Ms. Welsh to present the committee work plan. The question is, shall the committee recommend the work plan to the full board approval? Um, and so now we'll have discussion around it. Ms. Ms. Welsh, presentation?
Yes. So for the, um, so if you scrolled, uh, so that we can see them all, and actually, I just realized I have a typo there. It should say twenty-five, twenty-six uh school year, but it is for next year. So these, the ones that are listed here, uh, several of them, we've already discussed it for upcoming uh um, uh, for, for this coming year. But the uh rules of procedure, this forty-two hundred, that one is one that OGC has requested. And I think it goes to the whole process of when you are doing appeals for six-two-two and four-two-five. Public comments, uh, one that was requested for it to be um up, it came up on the list. So, so actually Cindy and myself, Cindy started this list, and anytime people requesting or something came up that needed to be added to the list, these were ones that were added up to the list this past year. Um, disabilities is, issues advisory board, it's my understanding that they would like to have that policy revised. Uh, so that's why I incorporated that in there. And then we did receive a letter from a parent on the student, the disabilities, on the student appeals of disciplinary action, uh, five-one-one-five, so that one uh was a request from this past year, so we included that. And then the conversation, I think at the last committee meeting with inter-scholastic and extracurricular activities, uh, the conversation about making some revisions to that particular policy, so that one's on the list. Um, then there's two policies, uh, zero-one-two-six and zero-one-two-seven that were done back in two thousand sixteen, and they have never been updated um since then. Um, and they're, they're critical, very important policies. And so um now the idea being that we would be able to possibly to combine both of those policies and incorporate everything into one policy. Uh, grant assistance is another one that's an old policy, but um we are working on the revisions to the administrative procedure right now. So I think it'd be good to have that one uh up to date. The wellness nutrition and physical activities policy, we were supposed to go over that this past year, and it was, uh, we, it was on our agenda, but we, we did not get to, uh, partly because we did not get results of the study committee. And that was the whole purpose of bringing it back within a year. The, that policy requires a study committee to look at uh physical activity for middle school students. So they are still working on that, so they uh will have that done for next year. School-based management teams, we, they, um, the request was made a few times to see if we could get some principals in to come in and talk about how they run their school-based management teams. You all, as a committee, had requested that we, you know, talked to a couple of principals about it. And unfortunately, um, by the time they made, they actually, I think, got around to making the request, it was close to the end of the year, and trust me, being a principal once in my life, the last thing I'd want to do is probably come to a committee meeting on a policy when you're trying to close out the school year and you have kids going this way and that way and staff going every which way. So I understand why they weren't able to get any uh uh principals for this year. So that's on the calendar for next year. The other one that came up was student use of social media and portable electronic devices in the school. That's a really new policy that you all did in the spring of last year. But the reason that um it's going to be included, um, it was included was number one is MSDE did run a task force and come up with recommendations, and I do think that that might be something you would like to least consider. Um, and you might not decide you don't want to make any changes to the policy and you like it the way it is, but that is um one piece of it, as well as my understanding is that Mr. House had met with numerous groups and gotten feedback from different teachers' groups, I guess, and parents' groups um in terms of what recommendations were, which I think would be important to consider um to look at. So that's the only reason I put a backup on the uh for this coming year. And then um the Office of Internal Audit, so we have, do you have this, this policy, eighty-three seventy-three? And then you also have what the policy called audit, I think, auditors, uh, which is talking more about external auditors. But I have the um Cindy and I both talked about this in terms of uh putting those two policies together, so that you would talk about auditing in general, and then we'd have our internal auditors as well as then the external auditors. And then the next thing was um Board of Education Standing Committees and Focus Work Groups. There is supposed to be um a um uh uh is what, we want to incorporate Board Policy ninety-one forty into that um policy, to that policy, but also there's supposed to be a group, a policy, a committee that is actually looking at, and let me see if I have it here, is looking at um, uh, I don't have it, but it's, it's looking at um, uh, well, first of all, yeah, we have the Citizens Advisory Committee, but then uh we have one called Citizens Advisory Committees, which is a whole separate one that talks about all the different kinds of committees you can have, which seems like it would make sense to incorporate the two uh for any of these advisory committees as well as standing committees, as well as um, um, the superintendents, the evaluation, uh, what's as stated in one of the committee, one of the policies, it talks about the evaluation of um superintendent by a committee to begin the process first with an evaluation committee. So it's sort of like putting several pieces together and updating eighty-one hundred, so that it considers everything it should be cons- uh out there in terms of standing com- uh committees. And it would also include advisory committees and then focus work groups. Um, and these, as we go through these last ones, our goal was, so if you recall, we had these bylaws, all the nine thousand bylaws, and little by little, we've been chiseling away, moving the, these by, bylaws either, either by rescinding them or changing them from bylaws into policies and moving them over to the eighty-one hundred series. So if we get through the rest of these, what will happen is all the nine thousands will be out of the way and that whole section will, will disappear, and you'll just have your internal um policies that'll all be sitting in the eight thousands. So the next one is Certificates of Recognition, which would also incorporate uh Board Policy thirty-one eighty-six and ninety-three oh five. Then Bonding of Officers, which is very old and definitely a bylaw where you're required to have bonding of officers, but um that would be updated. And then um Dr. Moss, you had brought up this past year about the participation in meetings electronically. Um, and so I put that back on the list because we, uh, because it wasn't on the work plan for this past year, so it would be on the work plan for next year. And then Annual Report, another nine thousand one, which is um again required by law, uh, but it's right now is a very old policy that we should need to update. And then uh Management of Bank Accounts is not that old, but it should be updated and then incorporated into the eight thousand series. And then the last one is the evaluating the superintendent of schools. I added that only because that policy doesn't have anything to do with the committee, which is supposed to be, there is supposed to be an evaluation committee. Now, as, as just as Dr. Moss said earlier, if there are any of these that you feel like are not appropriate or we shouldn't even be touching or whatever, please, you know, it's, it's your policy, so you need to say what, you know, what you think should be included or not be included. This is really sort of the, the, you know, looking at what's, what we've heard, what people have said, what they want. And then what we know, what, I know the long-term goal was to try to get the nine thousand series, you know, cleaned up so that it didn't exist anymore. So that, that would be all of those, and then Cindy, if you scroll down, then these are ones that we would recommend for rescission. Um, and there's a couple nine thousands that are there, and then the numbering and indexing of board actions, is that? Is that, um, I jumped down, I apologize, but that one is, is so weird. It's just saying you're gonna number and index your board actions. And then the conversation of opening of meeting with prayer. That, uh, you did receive, I think, public comment, uh, related to, um. Um, a, a, one of your constituents that were concerned about the fact that it basically, they felt like their rights were being violated. Because of having prayer in the, um, board meeting. So I think that's, so that's why that one's up there for rescission. And again, it, uh, could be put over on the section of, of the one that you want, that you want, just want to review and revise. Anyway, then the auditor went one, which I told you will be combined to the other one, the citizens advisory, which will be combined to eighty one hundred. Now, newspaper advertising, I did talk to our communications office and we don't advertise anything by communicate, by the newspaper anymore. So. There's no reason to have that policy. So, so that would be removed. And then information packets, we haven't, haven't done in years. And so that one would be removed. And then combining cost estimates of, of board resolutions with proclamations. And, um, something else with, which is eight, three, eight, four, and nine, three, oh, five, so that they could all be put together. And that, yeah, and then proclamations. So we're rescinding both of those and putting them all into one policy. And I think that's it for all the recisions. And then if you go down to component three, this is about all the administrative procedures that now need to either be developed or updated. Based on the policies that have been done during the past year. Um, so I just put those in place. And then if you, and the only student tell health, we don't have a number yet for that policy. That's the only reason there's no number there. And then if you scroll down to the last page. Um, this is, um, the two, uh, policies that, two A P s that we currently have that have no. Policy, but I think are important ones would be immunizations and accident reporting. So, um, of course, any of this is open for discussion. The, all these components, just as refresher is based on the, um. Your policy development, um, policy, which actually talks about the fact that this is, uh, you would receive a memo from the superintendent. With these four components addressed and it, so that's what you are receiving.
Board member Walker, um, and then vice chair Briggs.
Thank you. Um, as always, thanks, Ms. Welsh. Um, I wonder, Ms. Welsh, I don't know how to put this on there, but at one time, board members, I, I think you'll remember, uh, because it was a big deal. Remember when we talked about that nine thousand series and, um, we had some help to go through and kind of rescind a number of those. But, and I know we did this exercise, but I was wondering, does it make sense to call it maybe like a review just to make sure? All of those policies that were rescinded, I'm not looking to revisit them, are actually translated to either a policy or an operations. Or we have it somewhere. Um, I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything. So that's one I wanted to ask what you all's thoughts were. And, um, for some reason, I'm not thinking of the exact nine thousand, um, policy. I just don't know if it translated over. And I just want to do just a double check. Uh, for that, that's one. And then the second piece, I didn't see, um, P C A C on there. And I know we talked about that. That's policy fifteen hundred. That didn't make it to the list. Um, I think we revised it in twenty twenty four, but there's been some things that we talked about of late. That might just be quick, um, policy updates, uh, to think about colleagues. So I'm happy to hear from you on both of those, your thoughts.
I could answer the piece on the nine thousand series, if that's okay. So with the nine thousand series, after we developed rules of procedure. I've been tracking it very closely to make sure we incorporated everything into rules of procedure. And whichever one we missed. I worked with Ms. Welsh to kind of either give them new numbers or have them rescinded. Because they were duplicates in other policies.
Oh, that's awesome. I just wanted to do our double check because I know that process happened really quickly. And if I can think of the specific one, I'll send it to you directly, Cindy. That's the one I'm like, oh, man. Okay, thank you.
Uh, we should just probably put the real, just Cindy, we should probably put the rules of procedure on anyway, um, for next year. Uh, I think there are a couple of, there are a couple of practices in the rules of procedure that may need to be revised. Um, that we can talk about a little bit later, that I don't know that when we, when it was done prior, we thought about the implementation of it. So, um, but I'm, I'm happy to talk about some of those early on, like just looking at the rules of procedure sometimes is a bit hard to, to do so. To board member Walker's point, I think we just need to put the whole rules of procedure, Ms. Welsh, as up for review next year.
And we can do that, but I do want to, uh, share, um. My think, my, and certainly you tell me if you think you want to do something different, but. I'd like to try to keep our number down to about sixteen policies because what has happened is number one is that. We, we keep running out of time. The policy, the, the policy meeting goes on for, you know, for lengthy time. And if a board member can't stay for the entire time, then we can't finish it. So then these policies keep getting moved over to the next. And I don't think it's good practice to rush through policies just because that is probably the board's most important work when they're putting a policy together. And, um, the other thing is where there could be a special session. There's a lot of talk about a special session for legislative sessions starting in October. As well as then the regular session. And once those, those, that gets into, you know, in moving forward. Then a lot of time is often spent in a policy meeting discussing just what's happening legislatively. So I, I don't want us end up piling up policies. So I was thinking if we looked at. If it's a monthly meeting and two new policies on a monthly meeting would be introduced. And then when, when we get to where we have it every other week, it would be one new policy that would be introduced every other week. And that way, we're not, we're not running in, running into policies and running out of time. But that was my, just, just my plan. So, um, if we're gonna add something, then I think we should think about then taking something off also.
Okay, um, I appreciate that, um, flag, um. I think we can get into prioritizing a little bit later, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Um, I like, we just at least get them on the list for now and then we can get to prioritization a little bit later, if that's okay with the rest of the committee. Okay, um, board, uh, vice chair Briggs.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I, I'll, I guess I'll add on to that. I did have, uh, two policies that I also, um, sent in. And would love to have considered on the list. So this was board policy fifty one ten. It was about sibling enrollment. Um, I had a constituent that reached out. I think it's a really important policy because essentially it's. Having, uh, a sibling at a school. And right now, what happens is if you have, let's say your sister, Mrs. Welsh, when you were ten. Was at a school, um, but was heading off to high school or heading off to middle school. Um, what happens is that the enrollment period that exists doesn't count as a sibling at the school. So. If you are applying during enrollment, that doesn't qualify for the sibling enrollment process. Um, they actually have to be at the school, the, the next, uh, school year in order for that to happen. So I think it's, I think it's something that's probably a quick thing to change. It's a really quick, easy language change, but I think it would have a significant impact on students. And then the last one was, um. Uh, this was an administrative procedure, sixty one forty four, language immersion program. Um, it deals with specialty programs. And essentially there was a family that traveled, um, for, because they were working for USAID out of the country. We all know what happened with USAID and they were enrolled at, uh, one of the immersion schools. They came back probably within months and they couldn't get their son re-enrolled. He was in kindergarten at the time. Um, but when they came back, he had to kind of go through this really, um, laborious process to get back into the school. But he had already demonstrated that he was able to, um, he had the competencies to be at the school. So I think that that's another one that's not a, a heavy. Um, you know, requirement of time, but I do think that it could be something that have a significant impact on the community. So. Wanted to just name those two, um, for my colleagues and also for you all. I sent that as a Google form doc, um, submission. Um, that I think you have possibly seen.
I, and actually I appreciate you bringing that up because I did see both of those and felt that those were ones that would, um, be, require changes. In administrative procedures and weren't necessarily policy items, because it really, it's all about how we're operating, you know, in terms of the, um. If a student leaves and comes back, you know, um, in that particular situation as well as the sibling enrollment and there, I can't, I was just trying to look it up quick. There's administrative procedure that does talk about sibling enrollment. So that would just be making, um, that change that you talked about putting it into that administrative procedure. That's the only reason I didn't incorporate that into the policy list, because I thought we could make those changes in the A P s.
Okay. Well, yeah, then maybe we can have a conversation about that offline and then we have.
Also want to flag that sibling enrollment is on the meeting agenda tonight for rescission.
Yeah, I know that that policy is there. I'm not sure if that's the same thing, but that, that's, yeah, I think that's a different one. But thank you for that, Cindy, because I know that was something I was confused about too.
Okay, um, is there anything else on this, uh, item? Okay, the question is, shall the committee recommend the work plan to the full board for approval? Ms. Adley, could you please take the role?
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Let's do this rather.
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Yeah, four in the affirmative.
There are four in the affirmative, the work plan will be recommended to the full board. Uh, let's move to policy item four point two, um, home and hospital teaching. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to present her guest speakers and to provide an update on the new policy, home and hospital teaching. You're muted, Ms. Welsh.
I apologize. Anyway, um, oh, there it is. Okay, so, um, this is a new policy. We did have an administrative procedure. We've had that for a while, but we had no policy to go with it. And, and in essence, uh, home and hospital teaching. Is something that's provided to students who have, uh, either, they either have, um, and it's actually required by law in education. Article seven dash three oh one point one. And so if they have either a, um, a physical or emotional health condition. Um, or if they are pregnant or a parenting student, actually, um, that they, um, have the home and hospital as a. Uh, alternative to actually come to school every day. So in essence, it's really laying out what the requirements are. For when you offer a home and hospital teacher in terms of, um, the fact that you have to have, um, something from an authorized health provider. That, um, uh, basically, um, lays out the condition of the student and everything and, and is the justification for why the student would need home and hospital teaching. And it is a short-term service. It's not intended to be for like all year long or anything, but during the time that a student is ill. Or having some type of, uh, emotional or physical, uh, health condition. And then, um, there's, it's, what it says is the superintendent shall ensure that, uh, all the instructional services are provided. To students, uh, that do qualify under this condition. Um, and it's also, I did, uh, refer back over to board policy five, one, one, nine point three, which pregnant and parenting students. Um, because that is one of the alternative forms of education that we listed in that policy for a student who would be. Um, you know, pregnant, pregnant to a point where they weren't able to come to school or they were a parenting student, then they could. Uh, for the first couple of weeks, they could actually, um, get their, um, education and through him and hospital teaching. Um, and then, um, let's see, the other responsibility the superintendent are designated is to ensure that parents are made aware of this. As a, as an option for when students are having, uh, some type of qualified health condition. And then, um, the stu, the superintendent and the A P does lay this out in terms of the manner in which the instructional services will be delivered. Uh, safety procedures, uh, also including training to ensure appropriate supervised safe environment for students and teachers. And then developing a review process to resolve any disagreements regarding that might arise in implementation of services. And then every sixty days, calendar days, there should be a review and determination of the continuation of the services. Um, the superintendent is also responsible for, um, um, uh, ensuring that determination for the need of the service begins. As soon as possible after the verification of the need for the service. So, uh, but not later than ten school calendar days. And then for a student with a disability, an I E P team would be the ones that would determine the instructional services to be provided to the student. Uh, that has the verified physical or emotional condition, as well as the team would have to develop a plan for returning the student to the school-based program. So at pretty much this is, uh, straight from the law, but it is a requirement and it, um, um, we, you know, we have a policy now. That goes with the administrative procedure.
Um, committee members, are there any questions or discussion around this policy? Uh, board member, uh, vice chair Briggs.
Okay, thank you so much. I had, uh, three, four things that I wanted to just flag for Ms. Welsh and I'll send this as a comment as well. Um, but I wanted to include mental health and behavioral health explicitly. So depression, anxiety, trauma is qualifying conditions. Um, not just physical illness. I think, I don't think I saw that in the policy, but you can clarify that.
It is an emotional health condition.
Oh, it is, okay. Um, and then I said to include students in partial day programs or outpatient treatment who still needs, uh, academic support. Um, was that something that you, I was reading through it quickly, but was that something that you had in there?
No, but it's, but it would be any, any student. I mean, it doesn't matter what program they're in. Let's say they're in, um. Um, you know, partial day program or something and they become ill and they can't attend their partial day program. Um, they absolutely can a, access that. So, I mean, I could, I could probably add some language somewhere.
I don't think you need to. I wanted to make sure that that was in there. If that's in there, then, um, that's great. Um, that's great news. Um, I also wanted to add in disproportionality tracking, so monitoring for inequities based on race, disability, language status.
Okay.
Um, and then lastly, annual reporting to include the number of students served, the average wait time, outcomes and demographic breakdown. Um, I'm not sure if I saw that in there, but you can clarify.
It's not, but, um, an annual report, okay?
Right, yeah. Thank you so much.
Uh, vice chair Briggs, did you get everything? There were four. I think I only heard three, unless I missed one.
No, there were, those four, but two of them were included in there. Yeah.
Okay, cool, cool. I can't count. It's okay. Uh, board member Aliva.
Thanks, Chair Moss. Um, and this might be just a question because I'm brand new to this work. But I, just the word vows just strikes me as odd. Is that the typical language that we would use in policies like this? The board vows to?
Oh, I mean, we could put any language there. The, I mean, anything the board wants, the committee wants to put in, that's fine.
Yeah, it's, it, it, but it's not consistent though across some of our other policies. We don't say vows in that way. It's not, it's not consistent. So I think that's a good flag. Um, I don't know what our attorney would say about that, but vows is, uh, probably. Has some, some legal weight beyond what we, we really care about. All my colleagues are shaking their head. And attorney came off camera, so we probably should get rid of the word vows.
Well, I, I can put, I've normally, I put is committed to.
Yeah, that makes more sense to me, but I would defer to the attorney and others. Thank you.
Board member Walker, you came off mute. Were you going to address the vows or you wanted to say something? I just want to make sure I got everybody.
No, I was gonna agree. Usually we, I was just gonna say sometimes we say shall or, but I'm good with however is not vows. Thanks for catching it.
No doubt. I wanted to make sure I included you. Um, Ms. Adley, could you please call the role on this then?
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Let's do this rather.
Aye.
Ms. Walker.
There are.
Aye.
Four in the affirm, we all talking. What you got, board member Walker, Cindy, what you got?
Four in the affirmative.
What you got, board member Walker? All right, there are four in the affirmative. New policy, home and hospital teaching will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Now, policy three thousand business, I think we've seen this one before too, so, um. Ms. Welsh?
Yes, so this is one that we, um, that we discussed at the last meeting and then, um, um, board member Briggs, uh, shared some, um. Um, actually sent me an email with all these different things. So I have to confess that, that, um, board member Briggs, the things that you wrote. I really, I did, I made some changes that I could figure out, but some of them I really was sort of at a loss what you were talking about. So I did, what I did was I put it into the policy. And highlighted so we could discuss specifically what you're, what, what you would like to see in the policy. Because I, I want to make sure it's what, you know, what you actually are requesting. So, um, uh, so if you can show it, then I can. Uh, share what, what, uh, all the highlighted areas, um, are, um. If you go down, so this was an old policy that we had and it maybe had only just a few sentences in it, uh, and so. You'll see anything that was the black language was from before, you know, the black, uh, font, but the red font was the new language incorporated. you'll see anything that was the black language was from before, you know, the black uh font, but the red font was the new language incorporated that we went over last year, except for if you see anything that has uh, that's highlighted in yellow, and those are the recommendations from Board Member Briggs. So you had asked that would say that in this purpose that it would say all students versus students, and then you talked about um, the total student or whatever, the total child or whatever, which I did look that up, uh, at that referred to socially, emotional, mental, physical, and academic needs of each student. So I incorporated that into the policy, and then if you scroll down further. So then you um, you said um substantially invoke stakeholders, stakeholders in the budgeting process. And this is where I thought maybe we would want to sort of discuss and uh maybe try to clarify. And then you had mitigating time constraints and effective planning strategies for robust planning processes. And then has internal stakeholders such as streamlined budgetary process that are aligned with all applicable state laws and policies. So I maybe if you talk a little bit, you know better how you would like that to be. And I will also say from a, a planning process internally, what the school system does is that, but way back like in September, October, as a, like a director of an office, I will get information from the uh finance office that talks about what needs to be put in place. And then um, I will, you know, I look at what our needs are, what, what we spent previously, what our needs are, what are our plans for the upcoming year, and put the budget together, then I goes, I go through with it with our chief, and then of course, the chief goes through it uh with, uh, you know, the chief of finance as well as the superintendent. So there's a lot of internal review going on uh as these things are being developed. Um, so um, so I wasn't a hundred percent certain when you said in fa- uh, effective planning strategy, robust planning, whatever. So maybe we can talk a little bit more about it. And then the next one was, again, is the highlighted is what um, Board Member Briggs shares, seek out and apply for grants, and then coordination between the grants office from federal, state, and private sources, sharing bucketed climate, environmental health equity areas where funding is lacking with a specific funding amount to get to adequacy in a timely fashion. And um, I, I wasn't certain who was, the coordination was with, you said between the grants office. So I didn't know which offices are actually coordinating, unless you're thinking the uh grants office along with the um, any department that wants to do a grant, like I, Dr. Golson had had me write the safety grants. So of course, I had to write the safety grant. I worked very closely with the grants office to put that grant together to meet all the legal requirements that need to be put in place to have this, so that we could get the grant. And then that you said about the um, sharing bucketed climate, environmental, healthy equity areas. So I, there's some grants that are, the state puts out, MSD puts out, that are not really competitive grants. But you, but they're available and you would be crazy not to access the grant because it's funding, like that's how we got all the locks on the doors and the, the indoor locks uh on each of the classroom doors in the school was because it was non-competitive grant, but um, uh, MCSS was putting it out there, so of course, we pursued it. So um, and it is an area that's lacking funding, so I just think we need to just talk about what that language looks like. And then under E, you have uh, uh, to ensure the administrative office provide appropriate support. So you had adequacy of applicable offices. I wasn't a hundred percent certain what that meant. Adequately staffed administrative offices with highly qualified employees and adequacy for applicable offices. So I felt like that need a little bit clarified, uh, to be clarified. And then um, and then uh the one on annual, excuse me a minute, um, Cindy, annually evaluate system efficiency. That one makes sense to me, just because you're gonna do an annual evaluation on how efficient you are. And then if you scroll down, then the last one was, and I'm not sure what happened here, but that should be a G, to ensure that the business of PGS results in providing students with a transformative educational experience, each standing committee of the board should coordinate its work with the other. Oh, I don't know that you gave me, you said something, but what made me think was actually, and it happened to do with the conversation when the standing committees and how they really need to interch- uh, they do interact, they should be interacting to some degree because there is an inner relationship. And then when I was looking at um, what is going, I started listening. So all this caused me to listen to the other committees and what they were doing. And as I'm listening, I'm realizing, oh, this is important legis- information for legislatively that we might need. Or this is really important as possibility for a policy. And so it made me think that maybe as a school system, when we're looking at all these standing committees though, there's needs to make sure that there is coordination among the standing committees in terms of sharing information and stuff, because they, they really don't sit separately. They really do work, you know, they're all working, you really are all working together in a way. So that's, I did, that was my only addition. The rest were all Jonathan's.
Okay. Well, I think you, I know you posed, or I'll let you go, Chair Moss.
You're good, Vice Chair Briggs. These are, these are all yours.
Okay. Um, so I, one, I want to say that whole child is obviously, I think you have found that that's a term that is used in the uh, education community. So that's looking at the entirety of the child. I'll be quite honest with you, Ms. Welsh. I'll have to go back when I read through the policy, if I have the context to go over what I was thinking at the time, that I can give the clarity. Um, I'm happy to walk through right now what initially I think my thinking was, but I'd have to read over that section again. Um, I know you said for, for a five, I'd like to build out the language to say substantively involve stakeholders in the budgeting process, mitigating time constraints and effective planning strategies for robust planning processes. So I think essentially what I was saying was, and I was hoping that you would translate that into kind of some legal statutory, well, this isn't statutory, but policy language that would make sense. Um, but
Just tell me what your end goal was, though. What are you, what, what were you thinking?
Yeah, I'd have to read that section, so I, obviously I isolated that specific piece for a reason, but I think what I said was, I'd like to mention internal stakeholders such as streamlined budgetary processes that are aligned with all applicable state laws and policies. So I think essentially what my thinking was, if we're backwards planning, we're thinking about the strategic planning that happens when we as a board work with the superintendent around whatever the strategic plan is. The goal is that we're also taking into consideration, I'm assuming there would be some coordination, I'm obviously trying to draw from whatever it was that I was thinking at that time, so I'd have to go back. I don't know, this is gonna be super helpful to you right now, because I'm thinking back to what I was talking about then, without looking at the language. But what I will say is, I think my assumption is, what I was saying to you was that we're backwards planning with the end in mind. So we have the strategic plan, we're moving the direction of all of the different uh stakeholder organi- or, or departments and offices working in coordination to really um provide input. Can you, Cindy, what would be helpful is if you can pull up the language, that'd be helpful. Can you pull that up? And I think that was sublet for A five.
Would it be helpful for us to sort through this when it comes back to the committee again?
I think so. I think honestly, I think what makes the most sense is for Mrs. Welsh and I to have a conversation about it um, offline, because I'd need to look at what the language says. So there, I don't know, and I also don't think it's a good use of time right now to have a discussion about it. Um, I don't know.
I'd like to, I'd like to advance this on to the next step, and then you all can address it in the, the next level of policy change, which will be after public. I think this has one more step. Is this first re- yeah, it's after public comment. We can address it then.
This, this is, this was discussions item again, so it still has to be voted um.
Yeah.
It has to go to, back to the spot, sponsor. It has to be um, you go through the approval process first before it goes out to public comment.
Yes, yes. Okay, alright, well, let's just do that, and then y'all can, the next time we review it, when it, before it goes out for public comment, not what you want it to be. Um, Vice Chair Briggs, we can make, you know, adjustments to it.
I, I'm, I'm happy with whatever. What I would want to do is, Mrs. Welsh, we can find a time to talk, probably. We can just align on it. I, I think it's an easy thing to do.
Alright, the question is, shall um, the committee recommend policy three thousand business? I'm sorry, I didn't ask the rest of the committee if they had questions. Y'all forgive me. Anybody else have questions or comments?
We can.
Alright, the, the question is, shall the committee recommend policy three thousand business to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Ms. Adley, will you take the role?
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Buddha Strata?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
There are four in your affirmative.
Uh, we have four in the affirmative. The policy three thousand business will be recommended to the policy sponsors for revision approval. Next up is policy ninety-three fifty-four, board members voucher reimbursement expenses. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to provide an overview of ninety-three fifty-four board members voucher reimbursement of expenses.
Okay, um, Cindy, if you don't mind posting it. So if you recall, just to give a little back, background, we had looked at this policy several times and we did make a good number of revisions back and forth, and then um, you, the, I, at the last time we discussed it, or the time before that, you said you must talk to internal audit, of which then finally I went and I discussed this whole thing with internal audit, and as, and then that's what came to light was this whole issue of going to professional conference, uh, going to conferences and everything, and does it come out of the seven thousand dollars per um, uh, board member, or it can the board office have uh, like a set amount of money set aside for professional conferences? Of which then it went through, I don't know, several different legal reviews like, and finally, the idea was that we should send it out to the Attorney General to get their pe- get uh his or her opinion. So we did receive um, uh, advice on this from the um, from the um, I think it was Assistant Attorney General, and she did share, she basically addressed all the things that we had talked about in terms of the fact that they, because four dash, uh, I mean, three dash ones, zero, zero, four does require professional development on the part of the board members, just Prince George's County Public School Board members. Um, it's not a requirement for all board members across state, and it lays out very specific uh, requirements for what type of training. I think her, her thinking was, is that they um, it should probably um, it would make, it would it, she didn't see it being a conflict with the seven thousand dollar reimbursement limit since the, that other provision is in the law. Um, and um, if um, if the, uh, the, the board's attorney is on, on, on the call, I don't know, I know you just asked him and he didn't answer, but if he was, he can certainly jump here, in here at any point. I, you know, you know, to, to provide a, a better explanation. So anyway, so in essence, then um, Doc, um, Board Member Walker provided um, of some feedback in terms of some language that she would like to see. So then I, you'll see that the, in yellow is the actual uh additions based on the opinion that we, or not opinion, but advice that we did receive from the Attorney General, Assistant Attorney General. So, and this is some of your language, uh, Board Member Walker. It says, direct payments by the board office for professional development conferences aligned with our education article three dash one zero zero four E are not considered reimbursements and do not count toward the seven thousand cap. And then if you scroll down further. Keep going. And, um, and those, that's actually was some old language, um, that we had, we had lots of conversations about distributing flyers, and then there was a conversation was about adding non-recurring and then putting mailers in, and then of course fraud uh, as it relates to policy ones or, zero, zero, one, one, zero, nine. But then scroll down further, there's more I added there. Um, uh, that's not it. Keep going. What is this one? It's, oh, attendance at professional development conference may be co- covered through either reimbursement or direct payment by the board office. And then um, we, I had already addressed this actually in eighty-two hundred, where um, to some degree, where it says, in accordance with policy eighty-two hundred, professional development for board members, the board office will directly fund the cost of professional development conferences that address the following subjects. And this is actually eighty-two hundred aligns with three dash one zero zero four. So then if you scroll down, it then has the different uh topics that is in the law that other board members are supposed to be trained on. And then it says, in order for the board office to pay for the conference, the board member must provide documentation that the conference addresses any of the above subjects. So that would be then, uh, that would be, yeah, based on the, based on that advice that we did receive from the Attorney General. And then if you go to, there was one other thing that had to do with the IRS. Um, and the um, if I recall, the um, let's see. I think she basically said, and I did put the, I, I didn't touch it because of what she had said in her uh, go, you can go. I'm sorry, there's the, the dog came in here. Um, anyway, she says that um, mileage reimbursement, hold on. Uh, ultimately, the county board has the statutory authority to adopt its own bylaws, rules, or regulations. Um, and the county board could decide to clarify or change its own rules as it relates to mileage reimbursement. So ultimately, she's saying you can do it any which way you want to. So uh, and we had had this whole conversation related to, uh, are you getting reimbursed from the board office? Are you getting reimbursed from your home? Where are you, where are you getting reimbursed? And she's basically saying, whatever the county board wants to do, they have the authority to make that decision. So I didn't touch what we currently have, because I didn't know if you wanted to discuss it further and, and make any other changes to it.
Is it, that was the last bit of the changes, right?
Yes, uh-huh.
I think this committee was going back and forth about folks home. For people who live, I'm not gonna make this about a particular board member, but I will make it about a particular community. Um, for folks who live in the southernmost part of the county, it, it is a bit of a trek um, to come all the way across. So um, I, I do think we need to um, I do think we need to shift a little bit to going from home, uh, particularly for that concern. Um, yeah, I don't know. But that's where we were and how we got here. And so I, I support changing it now that legally we can. I think that was the only like concern we had. Uh, but I allow that board member to speak if they so choose. Uh, but I do support the, the change uh, based on that far out. I, I, I happened to drive down there the other day just for the heck of it, uh, just, uh, because I haven't been down there like since I really moved here. Um, but I, I do think it's important for us to make the adjustment. Um, but Board Member Walker, you raised your hand, so I'll allow you.
The members of District Nine, thank you. Um, I can't believe you were down in my neck of the woods and didn't call. See what happens with board members. I'll just leave that there, not for my two and a half minutes. But I did want to ask about the um, there's a piece in there about community engagement, and let me just say, I'm a fan. I'm not trying to change anything, guys. But of the A B, like A through H or something, I did see community engagement. Can we just define that just real quickly out loud, not necessarily he, um, in the policy itself. And the reason I'm asking is because I recently asked about um, reimbursement for something and was told the answer was no from legal counsel, but I saw community engagement. I'm like, oh, it hit that, but maybe somebody can help me with what that is. Uh, maybe Cindy, if we pull that back up, or I'm sorry, not Cindy, uh, Ms. Welsh?
You know, yes. You know, and that, that, that um, it's, Cindy, if you've been putting it up, it is the first item of the subject matter for
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, scroll down, Cindy, to, to the um, if you keep going. Can you scroll down to where we get to the uh, it'll, it'll, yeah, right there. So that is one of the first items, um, but that, it doesn't, of course, provide a type of uh definition. Um.
Well, it's okay. I just was, okay.
And it is, it is about, it is about professional development. So it's, it's like going to a um, um, like a conference, and they have sessions on community engagement. So as a board member, what's your role in engaging with the community? Uh, and how are, you know, effective ways of engaging with the community, things like that. So I'm, I'm just brainstorming what might be in a professional development session.
Perfect. You've already answered it. That's perfect. Thank you. I just was hoping for some context. So that's super helpful. I'm super clear. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about the changes that have been made here? Um, Ms. Welsh, are, are you asking us, there's only one really decision point we need to make now, and that's around mileage from home or from the board office? That's the, really the only decision point, right?
Right, and I'm trying to find that in the AP, in the policy where we actually have the language there. Um, ah, darn it. To see what we currently, because I know we went back and forth and back and forth on it. Uh, for life of me, it's not popping out when I read through it on my, oh, wait a minute. Um, oh, when we talk about mileage, we defined it, it's actually under the standard mileage rate under definitions, and we say um, um, for board non-local travel, it's that, well, that's not quite the same as mileage rate, but we have the definition there. And then we say standard mileage rate, mileage will be reimbursed at the prevailing IRS standard mileage rate for miles traveled in excess of the round trip daily commute between the traveler's residence and base location or designated service location. So that's what's currently being defined as, as a standard mileage rate that you would be um, um, you know, reimbursed for. So that that's the that's what he the um Attorney General, the Assistant Attorney General is saying, it's up to you to decide how you wanna do that.
Any thoughts here colleagues? I I favor the most generous one, uh whatever, uh whichever one that is, and I think the most generous one is from home.
I'm in favor.
Any any dissent here or different perspective? All right, um I think we're good here, Ms. Welsh. Um.
But this but I I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but it does say mileage rate for miles traveled in excess of the round trip daily commute. Between the traveler's residence and base location or designated service location. So what they're saying is. That you're subtracting, you're taking that out before you actually get reimbursed. So uh what you're you're saying is. It should be, you're saying that the base location will be the home and then any mileage from your home to. To either the board event or to any event you're going to is what I think you're saying.
Yeah, and what I what I think it would be important to do is to add a definition in the policy of as with respect to board members. That the base location um is their home because we don't hold and we don't have like office space or workspace. Inside of the SASSA building. So you need to offer a definition in the policy to get us there.
Okay.
Um Cindy, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I do have one question and maybe that's for legal counsel. This law on the seven thousand dollars, right? Will mileage reimbursement come from that seven thousand dollars or from the board account?
No, it would be related to the way the and the attorney can jump in here, but I I read it as if anything that's related to that professional development. Would come from that professional development pot of money, not from the seven thousand dollars. So if it's professional development, any associated costs. But I'll defer to the attorney. I read it that way. I could be reading it wrong.
Uh, thank you, uh Mr. Chair. I read it the same way you read it.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to be able to share it with my team.
Thank you. Um Ms. Welsh, are you good again?
And I'm just one other question for board council. So my interpretation of what the attorney and the Assistant Attorney General said in terms of the mileage rate. Are you in agreement with that where she writes uh it's up to them to decide how they wanna do it? You're you're muted.
I I agree, that's what she says and and she says they can establish their own bylaws, so exactly what she says.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Okay, colleagues. Well, um if there are no other comments, um Ms. Ms. Adley, will you please take a roll roll call vote on. Policy ninety three fifty four board members voucher reimbursement of expenses?
Dr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Aye.
Is with the shredder?
Aye.
He's walking.
Aye.
One year for my sake.
All right, colleagues, we've got two more that we're voting on and the rest of them are recension. So uh hang in there with us. Um, the next one is employee use of social media and personal electronic devices. The chair recognizes Ms. Welsh to provide an overview of the new policy, employee use of social media and personal electronic devices. Ms. Welsh, I I wanna ask you in your presentation, can you talk around what the district has done in terms of employee engagement to draft this policy? Um, I'd love for you to include what we've done in terms of employee engagement to draft this policy, if 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 you've had a chance to do that. But you can present now.
So um actually, we've done nothing. Because because the policy is actually from the administrative procedure. Uh the and the the administrative procedure is sitting out there with no policy, but I can tell you where it came from. Uh uh it was actually the administrative procedure was driven by an incident happened in the school system back in two thousand sixteen. Uh in which many a good number of elementary age students, you know, um were that were basically sexually abused. And so in what happened was the system put in place um numerous po administrative procedures. And policies to really su- um support and secure um the um the students. Uh and one of the and in when the task force who had that evaluated what was happening in the school system for such a situation to have occurred. One of the thing things were that there were no real restrictions on employees' communications with students. In terms of both for social media as well as for uh cell phones. So um and so. It was not uncommon for staff to be able to make personal phone calls to kids, to text, do personal texts to kids, you know, to um. And even social media. And if you look at all the research, when it talks about uh student safety in terms of um. Sexual predators and sexual abuse. Um of course, public schools are as an attraction place for people who have issues in that. Particular area, but it's also critically important to make sure that um that our students are protected and that there's rules for. You know, what how do you communicate with students? And one of the things is you should not be doing personal emails or personal texts. Or personal calls to students at any point in time. And we do have numerous um apps set up for them to for us. Uh staff, even like on field trips, that they can communicate with the parents or with the student, but but it's going through our personal, our school system apps. Which then also protects the student. Um so these really were put in place specifically for the protection of students. Uh but also take knowledge because student um employees, as far as professional media sites. Um, social media sites, that has become very popular and is a good way to communicate with uh the community and with parents. What are expectations in the classroom, ways to send homework home through s- through the professional uh social media sites. And then, of course, making sure that from a from the personal media sites, the personal ones. That there are definite restrictions so that the line, the you know, that fine line is never crossed between student and pa- and uh staff. Interactions. So that so that's basically how this all came about. It's it's really in terms of um basically protecting students. And helping employees know what the what the boundaries are and what they can and cannot do.
I got you. That makes that makes total sense. So essentially, what's happening is is an alignment between the admin procedure now. Okay, all right. Um at this time, I'll see if my colleagues have questions um about the policy or any feedback. Board Member Vice Chair Briggs.
Yep, thank you so much. Um Mrs. Welsh, I did have some some uh additions here around the points that you were just making. Privacy and secure cybersecurity protections. Um so I know you talked about um the social media. Piece and I'm not sure if you explicitly called that out, like social media platforms in the policy, was that in there?
It talks about it uh well, it talks about um um. Well, it talks about social media both from a stand uh professional social media site or presence as well as the personal social media site and present. I don't list any particular sites or anything, but I'm just saying, I mean, but then it talks about how you would use a professional site versus this a personal site.
Um I wanna go to the uh this privacy and cybersecurity protection. So I wanted to say ban of use of personal uh sensitive student information. So that's grades, health info, behavioral records. I don't think I saw that in there um when you were speaking, but you can correct me if that's the case. Um also staff training on cybersecurity and FERPA compliance is part of onboarding annually. So I would love to see that staff are actually. Especially new staff are receiving some type of training and that that's indicated in the policy um around use of cell phones and any. Student uh information and thank you for that. And then mandatory use of district approved apps, tools and restoring of transmitting any student related data. Uh student related data. So I think that like I can imagine that uh teachers are gonna be using their phones and they'll probably download apps that the school uses. There may be information that's shared or they may screenshot things or share with their colleagues. So I think if there's just some way that we can kind of strengthen the language in there to. Ensure that that's protected. And again, you can correct me here, Mrs. Welsh, was that was that included in the policy uh proposal?
So the all the for for protections were included in the policy. Um and there was also language related to uh the whole thing about not taking pictures of the students. Um now for uh so just to distinguish the two, for a professional site, you would be able to um. Um if in fact the student, the parent had signed off on the publicity consent form so that allows the school system to. Uh take pictures of students, then you know, so let's say a teacher has a professional site and their their class went on a field trip. And the students have uh that have they have a publicity consent form signed for the students. Then if the teacher, you know, the teachers love, especially younger, you know, young students and stuff, teachers love to take pictures of their kids in different sites. They will uh take those pictures and post them on their professional site, uh which is very different than their personal social site. So there are, there is language there in terms of what the requirements are, but you are saying, I wanna um. Go back to looking at what you're talking about in terms of cybersecurity information and just look at that a little bit more closely.
And then the last thing, uh Mrs. Welsh was um, I I think you were were alluding to this, but if you can just, I was trying to interrupt before it got to the um. The time over, but um prohibiting of live streaming or posting uh of like, you know, sensitive information in restricted areas, so classroom during instructional time. It could be an innocent thing that teachers will do. They'll wanna, like like you said, take pictures of their students or take pictures of the kids, but just having something in there that really restricts. Live streaming or anything um that would interfere with really um important things, including lockdowns. Please and thank.
Okay. Um. Those are good.
Did, I just also wanna flag, did did we get these in the in the tracker for the did. Uh Board Member Briggs, did you submit these into the tracker for the feedback?
I did it, but I can do it after.
Okay, I got you. Colleagues, any more um feedback or discussion around this policy? I appreciate you, Ms. Welsh, clarifying that this was in relation to the admin procedure. So um this is, this is all I had. Um co- uh Ms. Adley, could you please take a vote? Um could you please take a roll call? Um for employee use of social media and personal electronic devices, it'll be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Roll call?
Dr. Moss.
Aye.
Mr. Briggs.
Aye.
Let's do the shredder.
Aye.
He's walking.
Uh uh.
One year for my sake.
All right, uh foreign affirmed that the new policy, employee use of social media and personal electronic devices will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. We've got uh one more major policy tonight uh and colleagues um. At seven thirty, I'm gonna have to leave, so I just wanna flag flag that for you all. Um the policy zero one zero four, title nine, twenty twenty four amendments to USD O E regulations. Ms. Welsh, could you uh present this to us, please?
Yes, um so that policy um is up, has been updated um. When it was done back in, I think, twenty three, um had had included language related to um it talk, it does talk about. Uh sex-based discrimination and and harassment, but the um and there's lots of definitions in there. But anything that referred to um uh gender identity or expression has been removed because title nine, it has been removed. From title nine and is um and so they have moved back to the final rule, which is um twenty, which is the twenty twenty rule. Um and we were actually originally, when this got put on the list, it was updated to be in line with the twenty twenty four rule. And then that's the different things happened this year and everything got changed. And now uh also because of um some federal dis. Uh federal district court uh decision as well as um the um the amendments to title nine, the the regulations. They've now um taken all that language out of the policy. So this policy now does not have that, but it does have a couple additions. Of that were not really that laid out previously. One has to do with the fact that title nine does protect um. Um students um for of pa- of pregnant and parenting students. Um on the basis of pregnancy, childbirth, false pregnancy, termination of pregnancy, recovery from any other conditions. So that was not never in our policy. But should have been because that is definitely um related to um um to that is a title nine uh protection. And then um Cindy, you're going through it, so let me just check uh. If you can keep uh going, um. I'm trying. So I so there were additional uh um definitions, including, if you want to scroll back up for one second, please. Just to look at this, um I I put in language for retaliation because the the that's always a concern that if someone reports sexual harassment. Sexual discrimination, they might be retaliated and then uh actual uh knowledge is there, there's the the. Oh, keep scrolling down, please. Oh, yeah, I just lost you. Can you get back up to the page you were just at? Um, keep going a little bit further and then it lays out, um keep going a little bit further. It's really just uh defining. The language that's currently in the law. One has to do with consent, um because consent is not a factor ever with uh sexual harassment. Or sexual discrimination and then actual knowledge, um which is making sure it includes notes to any elementary secondary school. Employee or report by alleged victim or any third party of a title nine coordinator, or to the title nine coordinator in person by email, phone or mail. Or by mail. So because the actual knowledge is that when someone makes us aware, like even a a a student goes to a teacher in the. Building and and talks about something that's happened related to say sexual harassment or sexual discrimination. Then that teacher has the responsibility of moving forward and reporting it to their administrator or to the title nine coordinator so that it can be investigated. So then if you scroll down further and this just defines consent and then it's also educate what an educational program is. This parents, I put that in cuz it refers to parents nu- uh numerous places. This is a definition we've used in a lot of the policies. I'm trying to. Make sure we use consistent vocabulary terms across the policies. So that's there and then this defines the different parties. Uh which I think was previously there slightly difference uh definition, but keep scrolling down. I'm trying to go quickly. I apologize. And it keeps scrolling Cindy. Um and then we have, of course, the definition retaliation, then we have sex-based discrimination. Sexual harassment and this was all there before. Keep going. Um, keep going. And then um single instance of sexual assault, dating, violence and stalking, that's an addition. This all language in the black was all there before. And then um uh defined employees and school property. And again, is to align with our other policies, keep going. And then. Um, there there's reference to third party. So I mean, it doesn't necessarily be refer this uh title nine doesn't just protect employees. And students, but it could uh it could uh protect anyone that's coming into the school system. I also protects applicants for jobs. Uh and then if you keep going, title nine personnel, so just so you know, if you um scroll back up, there's every school system. Should have a title nine coordinator and whenever there's been a complaint that there has been sexual harassment or sexual discrimination. There should also be an investigator, which sometimes will be the title nine coordinator who does the investigation, but then there needs to be a decision maker. And the decision maker cannot be the investigator and that's specific in the law. So those are separate, so I put that into the policy. And then if you keep going, um this is a whole section about pregnancy that wasn't there before. And then this talks about that the superintendent's responsible for assigning uh the uh who will be what, who's gonna be the investigator, the title nine coordinator. The decision making that talks about professional development, which is really important um for both of making sure that uh. At all, everyone, all employees, they receive annual mandatory professional development on implementing this policy, which we do have a safe schools. Po- um a module that does address this. And then uh we wanna make sure that uh in addition to that, that the actual personnel. Title nine personnel that are doing the work, they've been adequately trained to do the work appropriately. And then if you scroll down further, there's reporting options. So meaning that um there's many different ways that can be reported, but the bottom line here is, is that i- if you're reporting. That um any which way you wanna report and to whoever it is the responsibility who does get receive the report to get it to the right person. So that an investigation can be uh can be done. If the person wants an investigation, investigate, sometimes people will report. But then say, no, I don't want this investigated. So and then if you scroll down further. Um and then if there's any violations of title nine, it is responsibility, if you become aware of anything from us, uh just your responsibility. As an employee, you are to report also. And then um just they say you observe harassment, sexual harassment. Um um staff on staff or staff on students and it would be your responsibility to report and and of course the person. If they made a good faith report, they cannot be retaliated against. And then if you continue further down the line, um let's see. This is all old language. There's a discussion about the equitable investigation. Uh scroll up one second, please. Just one there. Um has actual not without a formal, even with with or without a formal complaint, that we must promptly respond. And take steps and remedy any unlawful discrimination or harassment. And this is to. And this is to make sure all all formal complaints, it doesn't matter who's complained, it is the responsibility for us to be, make sure that we have investigated and that we have done it within a reasonable amount of time. And then if you continue to scroll, um, we, at the school system is resp- uh, carries the burden of proof here to make sure they have done everything they're supposed to do when they're investigating, and they've done a thorough investigation. And then, um, the Title Nine decision-maker is required to objectively evaluate all the relevant evidence uh, to make a decision. And then they must issue written reports. It really just lays out all the steps that are supposed to happen. Now, the AP itself will have much more detail, but this gives you your basic steps. Then there is the opportunity for informal resolution, if in fact the complainant would like to have formal resolution. And then uh, there is appeal process, uh, depending on the results of the investigation and the findings. Either the complainant or the respondent could file an appeal, which would eventually uh, could end up coming across the board's um, um, office in order, you know, the board members having to make a decision. Then if you scroll down further, uh, talks about keeping the record for these seven years, and then there's a whole thing on retaliation, which is important. And then, uh, if the person doesn't want to do, go through our process, they can file a report with the US Department of the Office of Civil Rights, or you're going a little too fast for me, Cindy, or US, uh, US Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. So, um, you don't have to go through our process, you can file directly with them. And then if you scroll down further, I think that is about it. In a nutshell, talks about the superintendent developing administrative procedures and taking immediate action to correct any violations. Um, um, and then over making su- sure that the Title Nine coordinator oversees implementation and compliance. The worst thing for a school system and the greatest liability is if it is found that the school system acted in deliberate indifference to any uh, complaints that they receive related to sexual discrimination, discrimination or se- sexual harassment. So that's why it's so important for the system to be responsive and to document everything.
Yeah, thank you so much, Ms. Welsh, for overviewing this. Um, I can't be the only person traumatized by the fact that we have to revise all of this because of. Yeah, um, so I'll see if there are any um, comments or concerns. And Vice Chair Briggs, you'll have to take over the meeting for the rescensions after this. I I have to to go after this vote. Uh, but all we have are the re- the policies that we need to rescind. But are there any discussions from committee members or questions about this policy? Uh, it it appears that we need to be in compliance with with federal changes around Title Nine. This is the first time I actually feel like we are having to revise a board policy that runs afoul to our equity policy, so I just want to I just want to name that out loud, and that's that's tough to process, but but I understand the legal ramifications of not doing it. So I just want to say to the general public that, I mean, we we have a equity policy that we stand by. Um, so, for sure.
Well, I just want to say, we also have the non-discrimination policy, and we also have, um, we also have LGBTQ plus policy. So we do have a lot of policies that I think reflect what the board's, you know, thoughts and feelings and convictions are. Um, you know, even though we did have to change Title Nine.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. All right, shall the committee recommend policy zero one zero four, Title Nine, to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Ms. Adelaide, please call the roll.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Buddha Shredder?
Aye.
He's Walker.
Aye.
What are you affirmative?
Okay, we're going to move on to item five point O, policies for second consideration. There are two items for consideration.
I think we have two more for rescission.
Oh, we do. I'm sorry. Um, we'll move to that. Okay, so. That should be four point eight, four point nine. So the two policies that we have for rescission are policy uh, twenty-eight eighty, or twenty-four eighty-three point one, notification of board of education policies, which is rescinded, and then a rescinded policy fifty-one ten point four, sibling enrollment. The chair recognizes Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of the rescinded policies for twenty-four eighty-one point three, notification of board of education, and fifty-one ten point four, sibling enrollment. Mrs. Welsh?
So two, four, five, three, uh, twenty-four eighty-three point one, which is notification of board of education policies. That information actually sits in policy eight one zero one, which is policy development. So it's a redundancy of what we already have in that other policy, so there's no reason to continue keeping this policy, which is which is only like uh, three sentences long. And then policy five one one zero point four, which is sibling enrollment, is actually referring to that students who have uh, have a sibling who have been assigned to a self-contained special education program and and another school other than their residential school, uh, or boundary school or whatever, um, that their siblings can then request a transfer, and they will be able to go to the same school that their student who's rece- their their sibling who's receiving special ed, they can go to the same school. And we actually have that language sitting in the the policy that talks about transfers. That's one of the, one of the reasons you can get a transfer is because your sibling isn't a special ed program in another school. So again, it's a redundancy, so that's the only reason these two are being rescinded, because they are redundant with current policies.
Okay, so the question is, shall the committee uh, recommend the rescinded policies to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Ms. Adelaide, please take a roll call vote.
Dr. Moss? Okay, Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Buddha Shredder?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
It's really affirmative.
All right, they're through in the affirmative. The rescinded policies will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. We'll now move on to item five point O, policies for second consideration. Uh, there are two items for consideration, item five point one, new policy telehealth, and five point two, policy eleven hundred, community schools. The question is, shall the committee release the policies under agenda item five point one and five point two for public comments? Any discussion? Ms. Adelaide, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Buddha Shredder?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
It's really affirmative.
You're in the affirmative. The policies under items, uh, agenda items five point one and five point two will be released for public comment. Um, now moving on to six point O, policies for third consideration, uh, first reader to the board. So item six point one, policy zero one one one, sustainability plan. Item six point two, policy zero one two three, artificial intelligence. Item six point three, policy zero one two four, E-rate management. Item uh, item six point four, policy thirty-one twenty, debt management. Um, item six point five, policy forty-one thirty-five, activities, organizations, political. And item six point six, policy fifty-one fifty, student involvement, rights, and responsibilities. The policies under agenda items six point one through six point six were submitted for public comments. One public comment was received. This comment was from uh, for policy forty-one thirty-five, activities, organizations, political. Um, the chair recognizes Mrs. Welsh uh, to share the comments received.
Actually, I apologize. I never didn't even think to pull those up. Cindy, do you have the, okay, thank you. I am really sorry. This is um, um, uh, has to do with policy, uh, it says four one three, that's not correct. It's missing a number. Cindy, do you?
This is four one three.
Four one three five, I'm sorry, four one three five. Okay, thank you. So this particular um, policy is they're talking about the fact they are in support of the current, the current policy. Um, and uh, would like to have uh, include that a rule of not using PGAS, um, may not use uh, use of PGAS schools may not use the facilities, equipment, material, personnel of the Board of Education Office during the duty hours and con- and con- to conduct their campaigning or execution of duties of family members. Uh, employees uh, will make it clear in their oral written statements, campaign materials, and actions that they speak as individuals and not as representatives of or employees of PGAS, and that is their personal views. Um, and I actually think we do have uh, that language in terms of um, not ma- not using, number one, not use, first of all, not using students as a way to um, advocate for what it is that you want, but also not um, making sure you're very clear that it's not that it is your personal opinion on certain things and not like the board's opinion, um, or who else, you know, whoever else that you're representing. Um, and we also have language in there, talks about not using the uh, school facilities during the day. It's not supposed to interrupt the day at all if you're running for office. So I think uh, I think we have most of the things that were in that comment covered in that policy.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. The question is, shall the committee recommend the policies under agenda items six point one through six point six to the full board for enactment? Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Adelaide, please take a roll call vote.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Mr. Buddha Shredder?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
It's really affirmative.
There are three in the affirmative. The policies under agenda items six point one through six point six will be recommended to the full board for consideration and enactment. We're now going to move on to item seven point O, adjournment. Um, this is our final meeting of the school year, so huge congratulations. I mean, it's been a journey of hard work, of dedication, of, I think, pivoting quickly. Um, and so I I do want to just take this moment to thank the entire P and G team. I think, you know, we know that even when things get hard, um, the work that you all do night and day to put, to construct these meetings is really appreciated. Um, so thank you all for your continued support and engagement throughout the year. I also want to thank the public for their time in uh, tuning into these things, because without you, we wouldn't be able to adjust our policies in an equitable way. Um, the chair informs, the vice chair informs the public that the next virtual Policy and Governance Committee meeting for the next school year will be on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education website for meeting information and updates. Um, thank you all for the great discussions and attendance. To our viewers, thank you for watching. On behalf of the Policy and Governance Committee, have a great summer break. Um, there being no further business, the time is now seven forty-two. The June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.